Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, April 3rd, 2014. Clerk, if you'll call our roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Here.
Counselor Camardo?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Resika?
Here.
Here. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Counsel, before we carry on, we have three carry-on resolutions. With no objection, we'll add them to the agenda. Very well, clerk, if you'll add 60, 61, and 62. We will start out with our public to be heard. If you would read our rules and regulations.
At this time, we will open the public-to-be-heard portion of this council meeting. As a reminder, pursuant to City Council Rules of Procedure, prior to addressing council, speakers are asked to state their name, address, and any affiliation. Your remarks must be limited to three minutes and concern only issues involving the city council, city government, or matters of general city concern. And all speakers before council will observe commonly-accepted rules of courtesy and decorum.
Dr. Aikman, I guess you're first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've started my stopwatch so that I don't go over time. My name is Walt Aikman. I live at 17 Liberty Street here in Auburn. By tradition, the last Friday in April is Arbor Day. And in our neck of the woods, it's a little easier to celebrate Arbor Day earlier in May. But the rule of thumb is, if the weather's yucky and it's cold and there's snow on the ground and it's March, it's a great time to plant. But that's for people like me. But if you want to help me plant this month, I'd love to have your help. I'd like to come with data. I did an inventory, 100% inventory census of the block around the Sewer Home, looked at 32 trees, two stumps, and about eight planting sites, maybe. Of the trees, six need to go. And there are three that need evaluation that may be possible high-hazard trees. Now, it's very easy for me to, like some of my friends, get very upset at NICEG recommending that we should go forward unilaterally and impose on them some severe regulations, but we're not willing to do that. So I would point out to you that the city departments and volunteers are doing what we can. We're planting mainly low and slow-growing trees. Low-growing trees to be compatible with our necessary infrastructure, and slow-growing trees so that we have the ability to respond in a timely way. And hopefully, not just be reactive in our management, but be proactive. However, I'm urging you as a council to step up. We need you to do more. And we need a new relationship with our utilities. It's high time that we have a clearly-written and agreed-upon memorandum of understanding. There are lots of the trees that NICEG spent good money to trim that should have been removed right then and there. And if we had a more vigorous partnership with them, they would save money, and we would save money. The bitter winner that we've had, and I'll bet you, I've still been at Snowbanks this week, we hope will slow the advance of the Emerald Ash Borer, but it probably won't in the long run make that much of a difference. And we have at least 1,000 trees on our streets that are ash, and many more in our parks and in our backyards. We're going to have a serious problem. So I urge you to think about the green infrastructure. Think about the gray infrastructure as well. I urge you to seriously reconsider this bond act. Look at the demographics, ladies and gentlemen. People like me are not moving back to Auburn, okay? We're leaving as fast as we can. Look at the demographics for the last 40 years. And there's only so much development the surrounding towns are going to be able to absorb. In my last 13 seconds, I just want to say, please strongly reconsider your position as a group on this bond ordinance. We need to invest in this infrastructure to get our property values back and our families secure. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Is anyone else desiring to be heard? No one else? Very well, we'll close that portion of our meeting. And we'll move along to the approval of the meeting minutes from March 22nd this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Camardo. Discussion? Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Motion to approve minutes from March 22nd, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. For the meeting of March 27th, 2014. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo? Counselor McCormick? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Motion to approve the minutes from March 27th, 2014. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Presentations and proclamations?
Yes, Mayor. The council received a letter from State Senator Mike Nizzolio in response to resolution that the council passed and sent to Senator Nizzolio. I'm going to read the letter from him to the city clerk, but I think he might have copied all the council members. "Thank you for forwarding me a copy of the Auburn City Council's resolution calling for the elimination of the gap elimination adjustment. As your New York State Senator, providing the best education possible for our young people is of the highest importance to me. I share your belief that we must do all we can to provide the opportunities our children need to succeed. Working together across my state senate district, every educator, teacher, school board member, parent, and property taxpayer has told me we need to eliminate the devastating gap elimination adjustment. Eliminating the gap elimination adjustment is my highest legislative priority during the current New York State budget deliberations. In an effort to protect our children and ensure that they receive the best education possible, my senate colleagues and I have adopted a budget proposal that restores up to $685 million of the gap elimination adjustment while giving local school districts spending flexibility in determining how they address their priorities. The senate's proposal provides nearly double the amount of funding proposed by the state assembly and more than double what the governor proposed. The truth is that the gap elimination adjustment, which has taken funds away from our schools since the 2009-2010 school year, was forced into place by then-Governor David Patterson when all three branches of state government were controlled by New York City. This has resulted in significantly less funding for our local schools, especially in upstate New York. I was a vocal opponent of this unfair and misguided plan when it was enacted because I knew how detrimental its impact would be on our schoolchildren, and I continue to oppose it today. Unfortunately, the gap elimination adjustment is one of the most damaging legacies left by the New York City Democrats who totally controlled state government in 2009 and 2010. Nothing is more important than our children's education, and the state senate's proposal provides critically-important funding to our local school districts so that they have the resources they need to provide our children with a quality education. This is an issue that transcends politics, and my colleagues and I are working together and fighting hard for the funds to totally eliminate the gap elimination adjustment. We will continue our efforts to achieve this objective. While I fully understand that our schools face significant challenges, the senate budget proposal is a major step toward meeting those challenges by increasing the amount of aid to our local school districts, helping to reduce the gap elimination adjustment, providing our children with a quality education, and protecting our property taxpayers. As my colleagues and I work toward a final budget agreement over the next few days, my highest priority is to fight for more funds to eliminate the gap elimination adjustment and ensure that state funding is distributed as fairly as possible. Please feel free to share any additional thoughts, concerns, or ideas with me on this very important issue. Your input helps me to better represent your interests in the state senate. With best wishes, Michael F. Nizzolio, Senator from the 54th District." And he mailed that letter to us at the end of last week.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
Public announcements?
No public announcements.
Mr. Selby?
A few items, Mayor. Anthony is here, and I'd like to have him come forward. We've seen the lake level jump a lot since Sunday, and I'd just like to report for the public's benefit what we're doing to try to lower the lake level and how it's affecting our projects.
Okay, 10 seconds or less since Sunday. We had a weather system move through here with the lake level at 710.80 last Friday, which was ballpark for this time of year while we're in a pointed portion of the curve where we're letting the lake level come back up to the summer elevation of 713. We had a weather system move through here over the weekend, which provided us with a little bit over two inches of rain. And that two inches of rain carried with it the approximately third of an inch of precipitation that was held in the snow cover. So from that time till now, the lake elevation has gone from that elevation, which was just under 711, to just over 713, which is the summer navigation level. Unfortunately, we also still have an ice cap on the lake. And with the weather forecast that we have now, that creates an immediate hazard for property damage around the lake. The forecast for the weekend is 30 mile-an-hour winds and the possibility of another inch-and-a-half of rain. So what we've decided to do is to call the construction, for now, on the Mill Street Dam to allow us to get the lake back under control. So while we've suspended work on that project, I needed to give them a good portion of today to secure the site and to get their equipment out of the way so that we could open the gates to do that. And in email communication with the New York State Barge Canal people, I made them aware that we're going to be discharging a fairly large amount of water so that we can do this. Now, I anticipate allowing this water to discharge at this rate through Monday. The unknown, of course, is going to be what we'll actually receive from the weather this weekend, okay? Like I said, they're anticipating up to another inch-and-a-half of rain. So we'll have to see what we actually get. But as you look outside, we have virtually no snow cover now, so we'll be able to measure the precipitation we get. There won't be much more snow melt to go into that. So if anyone has any questions.
Anthony, go ahead, Counsel.
No, go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
If I recall correctly, and I probably not, but an inch of rain represents, with the watershed, a foot of lake rise?
Yeah, it's actually a variable, but I'll give you the quick synopsis of that. After a drought, for example, last summer, very dry summer, we could have a thunderstorm with an inch of rain that would barely reach the lake. However, spring conditions, we've got a saturated soil. So an inch of rain on soil like we have now with the snow melt means a foot of moisture, a foot of rise on the lake easily during conditions like this.
Counselor Camardo?
Tony, just so everybody understands, we did a significant amount of work on a state dam.
Yes.
And could you give us a small update on that?
Sure.
I don't think there's anything to worry about with any fear of flooding in the city of Auburn because of the recent work done on that, if you can touch upon that.
Actually, two things going on. And to back up to the state dam project, during the winter, part of our handicap in accurately controlling the lake level, the state dam is actually the structure that controls the level of Wasco Lake. The Mill Street Dam is the next consecutive dam down that constrains a pond, and we use that for production of electricity and for some flow control. Now, with the state dam under construction, that dam has five flood-control gates that are fairly high up on the structure. And the structure's only about 12 feet tall, so when I say "high," it's not that high. But another flood-controlled gate on the west end that is from the top of the gate down to the bottom of the channel, that's about 18 feet, to the bedrock. During the past winter, it was not possible for us always to discharge at the levels we would have liked to because that deep gate, and in turn, those five flood gates, were being replaced. Now, that's finished. We only have some site work left to do at the state dam. So I now am able to release with the full capacity of that structure. The constraints that we have now are flow restrictions that are put upon us because of the work going on at Mill Street. At various stages of their construction, they can only tolerate varying amounts of water in the stream that go by the Mill Street Dam or that go over the Mill Street Dam past the power plant. So those are the constrictions that we're talking about now. By pausing that construction, it gives us the ability to make use of the full capacity to discharge at the state dam up to the level that we would do that avoids flooding downstream, which could be up to 1,500 cubic feet per second of water release, which is still not a flood condition downstream, but allows us a manageable withdrawal and discharge from the lake. And that's what we intend to do over the next few days.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Cuddy?
Mr. Selby, regarding the Mill Street Dam, is that going to be in jeopardy under the construction, or is everything, you know?
Should substantially not. We asked the contractor to secure the site as best as he could. His contract calls for him to be able to do that across the weather conditions that might confront us. He was aware at the time that, you know, we all signed the contracts that this eventuality could possibly occur. Of course, this is the first time we've actually had to do this. Up until now, we've been able to accommodate at some points, reaching very questionable levels on the lake. But I've asked him to ensure that he tried to secure his equipment as per contract. And I brought to the attention of council before that I had required and was not allowed to, you know, because of cost, a head gate at the project. They constructed a barrier instead. And the hope is that the barrier that they constructed will suffice to protect the equipment that's there. And what we foresee with this scheduled release, and we don't anticipate that it should cause any damage, but again, that will be the responsibility of the contractor. Okay?
Very good.
That does it.
A couple other items, Mayor and counsel. NICEG has announced they're going to start replacing a gas line on Genesee Street from Market Street to Fulton. They'll start on Monday with their own -- it'll be a contractor, but their own crews will be out there to inspect and oversee for safety purposes. It'll be along the north curb line of Genesee. And the other thing is, it was a rather big day yesterday afternoon when Mayor Quill signed, I don't know how many pages of papers, but at the conclusion of that, the city became the owner of the landfill gas-to-energy system. And our people are monitoring it. I was just out there just before the council meeting. And a later item on your agenda will authorize a contract with the entity that we want to operate the facility. And so hopefully, we'll be making some new projections about revenues and deficits based upon the fact that we now own the facility and will be able to control the operation.
Doug, could you just give the members of the public a little idea how much this is going to help out the budget that we bought this plant now? If you get some rough numbers that you can provide people with?
There had, in the past, been budget transfers in the neighborhood of $800,000 a year to support the operation of the plant. We're going to request the council keep some money in the budget for that because we're uncertain of how much net revenue will be generated. Our first outing on this, we may see a few months where, although we won't see the losses we've seen, they might not be at the break-even point, which is what we're forecasting over the next year.
It was quite a hefty sum of money that we signed for yesterday, so I hope it's good, because my name is on it.
You're on the line in case we go bad, you know, Mike.
Go back to living in a cardboard box again, so. Secret resolutions?
None, Mayor.
Ordinances?
None on ordinances tabled in legislation.
Award Resolution Number 55 of 2014, awarding the contract for the wastewater treatment plant roofing project. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Resika, seconded by Counselor Camardo.
Award Resolution Number 55 of 2014, awarding the contract for the wastewater treatment plant roofing project. Whereas, Council Resolution Number 20 of 2014 authorized the advertising for bids for the wastewater treatment plant roofing project. The roofing system at the plant and the CSOs have exceeded their useful life and require repairs and/or replacement. And whereas on March 18th, 2014, bids were open for the project and the following bids were received. CJ Marley Construction of Marcellus, New York, for a total of $761,400. WCA Roofing of East Syracuse, New York, for a total of $918,000. J&amp;B Installations of Skinny Atlas Falls, New York, for a total of $965,307. DeWalled Roofing of Central Square, New York, for a total of $1,084,200. Titan Roofing of Chickopee, Massachusetts, $1,138,000. Diamond Roofing of Syracuse, New York, $1,269,415. And Solid Rock Construction of Syracuse, New York, had an incomplete bid and was disqualified. Whereas CJ Marley Construction is the low bidder for the project in the amount of $761,400, which is the base bid plus Alternatives 1 and 2. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby award the bid for the wastewater treatment plant roofing upgrades project to CJ Marley of Marcellus, New York, in the amount of $761,400, which includes the base bids plus Alternatives 1 and Alternatives 2 as the low bidder.
Counselor Resika?
Yes, Mr. Lupien? I'm sure you expected to rise up. Just so everyone's aware, if you can describe what the alternate 1 and alternate 2 actually are.
Basically, alternate 1 is remove and replace the skylights. There's two skylights on one of the buildings and on the other one. We have a storefront entrance that's leaking all around it, and we're going to be replacing the frame on that so it'll be all watertight. Right now, water comes into the building there.
Okay.
Okay.
Counselor Camardo?
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Lupien, I don't know if everyone's done with your deck. Sorry.
Counselor Camardo, please.
I have a question for Doug. Doug, this money would be coming out of the sewer fund balance?
This was bonded for, I believe.
Okay, it was. All right.
Anyone else? Thanks, Mr. Lupien. Clerk, if you'll call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Council Resolution Number 56 of 2014, approving the new ambulance fee schedule. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Council Resolution Number 56 of 2014, approving the new ambulance fee schedule. Whereas TLC Emergency Medical Services Incorporated operates as the Auburn City Ambulance Company pursuant to an agreement in the city's operating certificate. And whereas pursuant to TLC's operating agreement with the city, it is required that the city approve any changes in rates charged for the ambulance services. And whereas TLC is requesting approval of a new fee schedule as indicated in the attachment to this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the new ambulance fee schedule for TLC Emergency Medical Services Incorporated pursuant to the rate schedule attached hereto and made a part hereof and set rates to be effective as of March 10th, 2014.
Counsel with us. I know Mr. Lon for Conno is with us. I'm sure he could ask any technical questions if he so desires, if he needs anything more. Counselor Resika?
I'll wait until he gets to the --
Sure.
Lon, if you just want to give an explanation as to why it looks like you're just raising the ALS and the BLS for $25?
It's a nominal increase. Believe me when I tell you, we are loathe to raise the price. But there are a number of factors affecting the delivery of ambulance service today that are problematic. The first is, over the last couple of years, we've seen each year a 2% reduction in Medicaid reimbursement. This year, we're seeing a 2% reduction in Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement. At the same time, we're looking at a flat call volume. So that's part of the problem. The other thing that really kind of affects this is that in most communities, the Medicare/Medicaid payer population runs about 35% or 40%. In this community, it's about 50%. And to help us through this, the state is now causing the ambulance sector to double its workman's compensation costs. We're going from $13,000 in payroll to $26,000 in payroll. So the only thing we can do, the rate increase, if you approve it, doesn't affect 100% of our call volume, obviously. Half of that is government-regulated. We can't change that. All we can do is hope that the third-party payers, such as No Fault, car accidents, Blue Cross/Blue Shield, and so on, will be able to help us keep pace. But that's certainly not going to really -- we're also looking at some other cost-saving measures. What we're also running into in the insurance industry now is they are resisting paying the usual and customary fees for ambulance service and trying to impose rate schedules that they themselves create, which requires a lot of litigation, not just in Auburn, but in the industry in general. So it's kind of like you buy something on credit, you get the product. Let's say it's a $600 TV. And you go to the store, and you give them your credit card, and you take the TV and go home. And then you come back and say, "Well, you know, I'm not going to pay $600 for that TV. I'm only going to give you four." And now they've got to fight you to get the rest of the money. So that's kind of what's going on in the third-party payer sector, which didn't used to be a problem. That's how the cost-shifting phenomena of Medicare, which runs about 6% to 10% below the cost of providing the service, Medicaid, which runs 30% to 40% below the cost of providing the service, was compensated for in the third-party payer sector. So you would make up, and that would kind of keep the costs for the government programs down while allowing the services to be delivered. Now, the private sector and third-party payers are going, "Well, you know, we want to pay Medicaid rates." And so there's a huge battle going on in the industry. So that's kind of the thumbnail sketch of our world today.
Counselor Camardo?
Lon, somebody that doesn't have, is not, has insurance. I've gotten some calls from seniors that have had a tough time paying the bill because they need transportation to a medical facility. Is that included in this?
Most seniors should not experience any change because if they have Medicare, those rates are fixed by the government. So we can't affect that rate schedule. So whatever their current program is, if they have Part A, Part B, maybe they have a supplemental insurance policy that they signed up for, that may or may not have a copay. We're not affecting any of that. That's business as usual, so to speak. And if anybody has a problem with an out-of-pocket expense, some part that they have to pay, you know, we offer them no-interest arrangements to make payments as they can. You know, we don't throw people into collections unless we, you know, have to, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Very good. Thank you, Lon.
Thank you.
Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
I just have a tough time with passing these costs on to whoever picks up the bill because after a while, you just can't seem to afford to pay for anything anymore other than what's in front of you. This is an emergency that comes up and for our seniors and for people that need it in the community, so I'm going to vote no.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Council Resolution Number 57 of 2014, approving council rules and procedures. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor McCormick, we have a second. Counselor Cuddy?
Council Resolution Number 57 of 2014, approving council rules and procedures. Whereas, Article 2, Section 8 of the Charter of the City of Auburn states that the council may adopt rules governing its proceedings and provide for the enforcement thereof. And whereas the council rules and procedures is the document which provides council the direction to conduct business and meetings in an organized, consistent manner in accordance to local and state law. And whereas the Auburn City Council has reviewed its rules and procedures and revised the document so that it is up-to-date and in adherence of local and state laws, now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve the document entitled Auburn City Council Rules and Procedures Revised, April 3rd, 2014. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall distribute copies of these updated rules and procedures to all members of the council, the city manager, and all city department heads, and that these rules and procedures are posted to the city council page of the city's website. And be it further resolved that these council rules and procedures shall take effect immediately. Counselor Camardo?
Mayor, I'd like to commend the staff and members of council who worked on this. I know a lot of time was spent on this, looking at all these rules and procedures. But the problem I have is when city business can be sent to members of council and acted upon within three days. You know, we spend a lot of money, the council has, trying to be very transparent, putting upgrades into our software so the general public can be informed of your business. It's the city business. It's the city businesses being conducted here, it's your business. And for any business to come to council three days before a council meeting, I think we need a longer time to that. Number one, so that we can do our homework, we can do our due diligence to make sure that we investigate anything that comes in front of council and do our proper homework on that. And also, that I have no problem if something needs to come in front of council, an emergency situation, those are emergency situations, and if the manager can say that it's an emergency, I don't have a problem with that. But I do think that we need more than three days as a council, and the public has the right to have more than three days to examine any business that would come in front of council. And I wouldn't support this because of that language that's in there as presented.
Counsel Rzika.
I too, I have some disagreements with a number of the changes, starting off with the references that basically link the history of the document. And all reports on Section 5. I would like to keep that last struck-out line of legislation shall be submitted to council with a minimum of least prior to release to the public. I need, I believe that needs to be kept. And also, again, I agree with Counsel Camardo's position on the number of days. Number 4, which is struck out, I would like to say, I would prefer to keep that. I believe that that has some value and merit.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Counsel Rzika, I don't know where you are. What page are you on?
I said, 5, Agenda 4.
5 Agenda 4?
Right.
Page 2.
Page 2.
Well, what I have is the track changes sheet that was sent out.
So what letter? What letter?
It would be under Agenda 5, Roman numeral 5. 4, which has been struck out on the original.
Could you, would you mind reading that? Because I-
A member of city council or the city manager may withdraw from the agenda prior to a vote, and any item here she is authorized unless any other member of council wishes to sponsor it. I wish to leave that in place. Also, that also, I see a number 4 that was inserted. I really don't have any issue with that. Again, on the next page, the presiding officer. Again, the references, all these references I feel need to be remained in place to track not only the changes, but the history, plus its evidence so that this thing has been looked at. The order of business, I can, I have no issue with. There needs to be a little bit more clarification on the, I know what they're saying here, but attendance at an executive session shall be permitted to any member of the public body and any other persons authorized by the public body. I know what they're saying. Somebody picking this up on the street isn't going to understand it. Okay? So I think maybe a little clarification language there.
Why don't we ask the clerk, what did you mean by that? Just so we, did you look at them?
I believe that's language that's currently in that we didn't change.
It's in the public meetings laws where he references it.
It's still in there.
Yeah. And then, under petitions, which is Roman numeral 9, and D that was struck out, or I'm sorry, E that was struck out, says all notice of claim and legal complaints filed against the City of Auburn are to be summarized by corporate council in written form and given to the council at their regular meetings. I would prefer that be left. On the public to be heard, I have no issue there. Again, I'd like to keep these references. And the motion to reconsider, that comes under?
11.
Letter C, paragraph C. I disagree with that addition because, simply because there may be some other issue material that may come forward after the fact, maybe within a day or two, or even longer, so I don't agree with that language. Again, all the references that I see struck out, I wish to leave. Then on, it would be voting, which is Roman numeral 13. Voting order, you remove the word "the" from the mayor's immediate left, which, to me, grammatically, it's incorrect to remove the "the." Again, the references. And the minutes, which is 16. It's, I have no problem with the digital video recording, but however, I think the language should base it in that this shall not be edited. And again, like I say, on the amendments page, which is the very last sheet, page 17 of 17, all those strike-throughs, I wish to keep that history. I think that's important. This is a legal document. These references need to be kept because it basically says and has evidence of when this was last reviewed.
Counsel Cuddy or McCormick, anything?
I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. The one thing that I wanted to just point out that is a good, I like that the public to be heard is moved further down in the agenda. I think that's going to be good because the, I find that people get here and we're almost done, and it's so, so close, right after the pledge. So I'm glad to see that that's moved down. I wanted to make people aware of that. I'm, of course, I was on the committee. I think this is beautiful. It did, we did go through it, and some of the things that Counsel Rzika mentioned have never been done. For example, the claims, never in the entire time that this document has been there. That's why I was so, so passionate about wanting it to be reviewed. There were so many things in here that were never done, were kind of obsolete, actually, for the times, that that's why we went through it, and some of the things came out or we just adjusted them. And then, as far as the amendments go, I know what you're talking about, but I think what we were thinking ahead of time was, once we all have seen this and it goes forward with a new, every two years, council will look at it, and it will be more updated frequently and more attention paid to it. That's why I started that history, because I, it just wasn't anything that people paid much attention to, me, council in particular. So I think that things that we did pull or take out were adjusted somewhere else to make sure we covered everything.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we either, two conditions, either we amend this to everyone's satisfaction, or else we have further discussion until we're all satisfied with the content.
Counsel Cuddy, you want to speak? Counsel, will, could we hold your?
Okay.
Mr. Rossi, go ahead.
Well, technically, there should be no discussion except the vote on the motion.
Motion. Very correct.
Unless you want to hold your-
Well, then I'll agree to hold my motion until the end of discussion.
Very good. Counsel Cuddy?
From my understanding, the, we still have work sessions in this, in this current-
Yeah, they're, it's set up to continue the current practice of business sessions and work sessions.
Well, I just know that the councils had a tough time, you know, staying within the parameters of that, and maybe it doesn't seem like it, you know, I'm considering just basically keeping the sessions so that we can vote, if we're going to call them work sessions, that we can vote during work sessions or get rid of work sessions altogether. So it would be, you know, because, again, we have the self-imposed rule that we're not really following. We've been getting criticized for it, so I think we may, you know, have it so that we can, if there is a pressing issue to vote on, then we can do it without breaking our own rules.
The language does, is worded that way. Says that you can vote, and it encourages the council to stick to matters that are time-sensitive.
Time-sensitive, yes.
Time-sensitive.
Counsel, you want to bring up your amendment?
Yes, I'd like to put this, table this until we have further discussion, we can all converge on the language. The procedures are important, and I think we all should converge on an agreed set of rules. I do feel that the, there is a definite need for the amendments portion to remain in there. Like I said, if someone has a question about it, they can refer to the sub-note, have instant identification of which resolution and where it was, and should be able to readily look it up. So I think that that's extremely important to maintain that legacy. So I, like I said, I would like to say we either, that we table this and bring this forward until we can converge on the language.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second. Now we can discuss the motion. Am I correct, Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
I'd like to make a suggestion. I'm not really opposed to tabling it, but with the upcoming budget, I would like to, in all honesty, I would be very happy dedicating a good portion of upcoming meeting after the budget is voted on. So we could spend some time, instead of jumping all over the place, I would ask it all the-
I agree.
I could work with that, but only on the condition that we table it till after budget and continue to work under present rules.
I have to agree, this, the budget should take priority over this.
I don't, Counsel, I don't agree with all of your changes, but I do feel it's, the entire council should have a say on this.
Very good.
And table to that point, so. Any other discussion?
We can discuss it after it's been motion to table? Yes?
No, there's an amendment.
Just on the motion.
On the motion. I would prefer to do an amendment or two, but I don't agree with all of Counselor Rzika's changes, so I don't, you can't really amend it, blanket amendment, so. And I really want to move it forward. This is, it's March, and we've been working on this for quite a while.
Mr. Rossi?
One suggestion I might make, if counselors would send us their changes to the proposed rules and procedures in writing, we can respond back and then narrow down exactly what we are dealing with, and it'll be much easier. And if there's an explanation, which I have on a couple of the matters that were brought forward, but we shouldn't waste the time now. If we have it in writing, the clerk and I can certainly address those issues and/or agree with others and proceed from there, at least compress it and be able to focus on exactly what's going to be needed.
Mr. Rossi, if you received it, could you share it with all of us so we all know what exactly we're speaking of? And that brings up a point. Counsel Rzika started in one direction with his amendment, and then it ended up being a tabling, so I-
Well, that's fine. If you're going to take additional time, give us time to sort through it all.
Sure.
So then Counsel McCormick's request was correct. We really, there was a motion to table it, so we have to work on that, so. Motion was made by Counsel Rzika basically to table it.
Correct.
Correct. Was there a second? It was by Counsel Camardo. Would you call the roll in regards to tabling it to a later date? Please.
Counselor McCormick?
I'll vote to table it. I'll vote aye, because I think it's important that we all are pretty much on board with this if we're going to abide by it, so.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Table.
It is, everyone should have it in Word format. If you use track changes, it would, and it'll come in there, you can easily forward it on to Corporation Council, and he can merge the document.
Mayor, before we move on, could I just make one point? John, maybe you can clear this up. When there's a matter to table on the floor, there's no discussion on the table, is there? A motion to table. We should just move on and vote on it instead of just sort of following proper procedure.
Yeah, that's why I get a little confused, because Counsel Rzika started out in one direction and we went to another, so.
Thank you.
And not blaming Counsel Rzika, I blame my old ears, but I just-
Well, I think the best thing was to handle it the way it was.
Financial Resolution Number 58 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2013-14 budget for expenses incurred in the office of Corporation Council. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Rzika seconded by Counsel Camardo.
Financial Resolution Number 58 of 2014, authorizing a budget amendment to fiscal year 2013-14 budget for expenses incurred in the office of Corporation Council. Whereas Corporation Council has incurred significant expenses in connection with negotiations with collective bargaining units and the purchase of the cogeneration facility, and whereas there is a need for additional funds to be transferred to finish negotiations with collective bargaining units and close on the cogeneration facility, and whereas an additional authorization in the amount of $80,000 in the services line is necessary for Corporation Council to complete these necessary tasks. Now therefore be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget, providing an increase in the Corporation Council Services Number A1420.440 in the amount of $80,000 through the use of fund balance. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval and adoption.
Discussion. Counsel McCormick?
I've got two issues on this. Well, just to explain further, part of this expense, about $40,000, is the co-gen, which is an unfortunate expense in any case. It's an expense that we have to pay in order to buy out the co-gen plant so that we can stop losing the millions of dollars that Auburn taxpayers have been losing. So that's, I would support because it is going to stop the city from losing money. The other part of this expense that we're, is over in the city Corporation Council's budget, which is no reflection on Corporation Council's, it's not, it's not something that they could control. This, this expense has to do with the legal bills that are attributed to the fire department, union negotiations. And I feel that these were approved, and this came to be because the previous council felt that they were responsible for this expense. And at the time, they felt that spending this was more important than proceeding with, in good faith and at a professional manner with the fire department. Rather than negotiate at the table, they wanted to take them to court, which was just throwing good money after bad. $40,000 to me is an employee salary or two, and it's a dollar amount that I can't support in theory. I know we have to make the transfer, but I just want to point out that this council has nothing to do, at least my personally, I don't want to speak for anyone else. It's just upsetting, and to me, it was irresponsible that this got to that level, to spend so much money to prove a point with a bargaining unit, money that isn't, is taxpayer money all in all. They, I just, it's not, wasn't good sense, good planning, and responsible. So I would like to propose an amendment to this resolution. I'd like to ask that the resolution be separated into two resolutions. The first, to transfer the $40,000 to cover the cost of the co-gen. And the second resolution, $40,000 to represent the cost of covering the expense for legal services in dealing with the fire department union. And I'd make an amendment for that amendment if I could.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Rossi, can you ask a question regarding, there's a motion on the floor?
We're amending, yeah. So I think-
To amend.
About the amendment. So, Counsel McCormick, this is a symbolic or a gesture to let the public know that, you know, that you're, you want the public to know that, you know, much of the, why we're making this transfer is that the funds have been depleted due to, to the, due to the last council's decision to go after the fire department.
Right. That's correct. Rather than just make a transfer, let it go, vote, and, every dollar is important. Jobs been cut, jobs were cut during that same two-month period, but this decision was made to just throw $40,000. I mean, they, they knew it was going to cost money, but to do it like this, and under the umbrella of, we're going to save the city money, when it's done absolutely the opposite. So I want to separate this so that it's identified. So, I want to separate this, so that it's identified.
Amendment.
I had made a motion.
I'm stuck here, Mr. Rossi. We have an amendment. Do we need a second, now we can discuss this?
Yeah, I think that --
All right.
So, it'll be seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
One of the things that --
Counselor --
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor McCormick, I'm glad that you're looking at the finances of the city. I'm very impressed by that. It's very commendable of you, but when you make comments that it was the past council, it was the majority of the past council, there was, I believe, two people who voted against the layoffs in the fire department. That was myself and Mayor Quill, so I do want that for the record, but I think it's important, as us as a council, that we got to make determinations, especially when it comes to Corporation Counsel, on what's going to be in-house, what our two corporations, or our attorneys are working on, and what we're going outside of for legal assistance. And I think we've got to start doing more in-house than starting to go out for, to bring attorneys in, especially at over $200 an hour, $250 an hour, whatever the going rate is. I think our expertise lies with the two attorneys we have here, and I feel confident that we can use those attorneys in these critical areas, especially when the city is having such financial difficulty as we're going to be facing shortly. So, those things can be discussed at budget time, when we set up the budgets for the individual departments, but I think we're going to have to spend some time in this area.
Counselor Cuddy?
The reason why I'm seconding this is that I think that it's important that, you know, we do need to address the past, because, you know, I think what happened is that we were focused on, we were focused on a particular issue that, again, in the long run, not only did it cost the city a large amount of legal fees, but overtime, and these were things that, you know, were discussed and warned about, and, you know, I'm supporting Counsel McCormick's motion, because it does just articulate to the public that the reason why we're separating the transfer of the funds is to let them know that, you know, much of this $80,000, half of it, at least half of the $80,000 is symbolically going in because of the amount of money that has gone into this negotiation of the fire contract. So, it has, it's more of an articulation of Counsel McCormick's and my understanding of this, and, you know, this was an important issue for us as we were running for office, and we want to make that clear in this motion.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes, the real reason these legal costs are incurring is because we did, indeed, we began negotiations. If anyone, everyone was aware of what was first initial negotiation, and I can't reveal that, I doubt they would have very much sympathy. The other thing is, we withheld, held the layoffs for additional months to allow additional time for negotiations. We did this at the, I'm going to say, suggestion of our labor relations attorney, because what we have is a 14-man minimum that's driving overtime, when we should be able to roll back to what used to be a 12-man minimum. It's the 14-man minimum that's driving the costs of overtime, and hence, if this achieves lowering that staffing level, it certainly will pay for itself in a short time.
Counsel McCormick?
Just to clarify, this amendment is to cover legal costs, not overtime. We're talking about legal costs. This is an amendment to transfer, about transferring money in the Corporation Counsel budget for fees, for services, that we paid attorneys, nothing to do with overtime.
Counsel?
This was an explanation as to why these fees were incurred. That is the reason, is in order to achieve a lower staffing level and lower the overtime costs.
Mr. Rossi, Mr. Mason, I'm going to turn to you. If this, in my mind, if this resolution passes, we will split this into Council Resolution 58A and B, and then vote on --
However the clerk feels that should be numbered, I don't --
Yeah, yeah.
There's no big issue with that. That's going to be done.
But then, each resolution will also have to be voted on.
Correct.
Unless this is defeated, and then it'll be one mass resolution. Okay? Is everyone clear with that, counsel?
Voting on the amendment.
Voting on the amendment. Does anyone need that read back to them?
Okay.
Okay. Clerk, if you'll call the roll in regards to the amendment proposed by Counselor McCormick.
Sure. Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
I don't think there's any need to, so I'm going to vote no.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rzika?
No.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Amendment is carried.
Very good. Now, if the clerk through Counsel McCormick can come up with a, we will need two resolutions, whatever numerical order, whatever order you want to place them in, and then the resolution.
Sure.
And then we will need a sponsor and a second to move forward on each of them also, so.
And it appears to me that the only change is in paragraph three in the resolution paragraph, where the amounts would be changed from 80 to 40.
With two separate resolutions, correct? All right.
So, what we'll do is, we'll call 58A will be the same worded resolution, with the exception of the second paragraph will say there is a need for additional funds to be transferred to cover the costs of the cogeneration facility, and the third paragraph will be changed to additional authorization in the amount of $40,000, and that'll be the first one that gets voted on.
Is that what you were looking for, counsel?
It is, thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that, the second paragraph would also have to be --
So, I'll just cross out the --
To the two different items.
Yep.
So, Counsel McCormick? We need a sponsor now for this new resolution.
For the amendment? No, we already did. Amended. I'll sponsor the co-gen. This is the co-gen end, right?
This $40,000, it should be A and B. Well, I mean, yes.
Right.
So, we have a sponsor, do we have a second? Counsel Cuddy? Discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Counsel, Resolution Number 58B?
Yep. So, 58B, the second paragraph will read, whereas there is a need for additional funds to be transferred to cover the costs associated with collective bargaining with the fire department, and then the third paragraph will say, whereas an additional authorization in the amount of $40,000 will be transferred.
Counsel McCormick, does that fit your request?
It does, thank you.
We'll take it, we'll need a sponsor for that.
Do we have a sponsor? Counsel McCormick?
Oh, wait a minute. Sponsor to amend?
No. Sponsor for that.
Oh, I canceled my sponsor.
Counsel Cuddy? Do we have a second? Counsel Camardo? Very good. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Because I think this $40,000 was spent unwisely, and just to prove a point with a bargaining unit, I'm going to vote no.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
No.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye.
Carried.
Mr. Rossi, please.
I'd just make one statement.
Please.
Since this has come before council, I want to caution council that there are additional costs incurred with the cogeneration, because we had the closing yesterday, which has not been billed out yet, and there was significant documentation that had to be prepared, and the attorney had to come to Auburn for the closing, so that there will be an additional bill there, and I can't even speculate on the additional amounts that will be charged for the further negotiations, depending on where they go between now and the end of the fiscal year. So, I think we'd probably be looking at an additional budget transfer because of those items.
You're talking about labor negotiations?
Both, both.
Beyond the $80,000 that we just approved.
The closing, no, just the, well, both, actually.
I believe that there will be additional charges that we're going to have to deal with.
Just so everybody's clear, it's two issues there. There's the co-gen, and there's negotiations. Correct?
Correct. Those are the two items.
Laura?
I just wanted to mention that I did estimate a little high, and we also got a reimbursement check since the resolution was written from the city, from the school district, so hopefully this budget transfer will cover most everything.
Be advised that it could not. It's speculative at this point.
But you're going to be in a new budget by June, correct? You're talking about through June, correct?
Oh, yeah, through the --
Right. Because you'll be on a new budget after that.
Correct.
I would request that the clerk, when you do the minutes, if you could, between yourself and Mr. Rossi, if we could have finalized copy of the amendments that have been, or the resolution had been split, so we could have it for our records in the future, please. Where are we at now? We want to be on number 59A, B, C, or you want to do just 59? Agreement Resolution Number 59 of 2014 authorizing the mayor into an agreement with the Downtown Business Improvement District. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel McCormick, do we have a second? Counsel Camardo?
Agreement Resolution Number 59 of 2014 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Downtown Business Improvement District. Whereas, the city of Auburn has previously entered into an agreement with the Downtown Business Improvement District to provide services on behalf of the district and the city, and whereas the current agreement expired on December 30, 2013, and the parties are desirous of entering into a new agreement for a term of 14 months, and whereas the city will contribute the sum of $40,000 to the district in exchange for services rendered maintaining the business district, and some additional duties have been assumed by the district to encourage residents and visitors to frequent the business establishments within the district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby approve an agreement with the Downtown Business Improvement District to provide funds in the amount of $40,000 in exchange for services maintaining the Downtown Business Improvement District, set agreement to have a term effective April 3, 2014, and expiring June 30, 2015, and be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the agreement with the Downtown Business Improvement District.
Discussion. Counsel Camardo, please.
Sure. Mayor, thank you. This came up, this issue came up just a couple of weeks ago when we were having budget discussions, and I'm not here to say whether I'm for or against this resolution to come up at this time. This resolution's asking for the city for $40,000 in funding for the Business Improvement District downtown. My point being is, we're within weeks of preparing a budget for the city of Auburn, and unfortunately, the budget with the city of Auburn, now this is the manager's projections, not mine, is we're going to have a two-over, $2 million deficit that the city's facing. Now, there's been many organizations come to the city for assistance, as the Downtown Business Improvement District has, and we need to get through the budget first to make sure that we're providing essential services to the taxpayers of the community, then we can look at if there's any money left over, or how we can fund other commissions or boards that might need help. Now, there's been arguments made that this saves the city money, but there's arguments with every board and commission across the city that says we save money, we help out the city, and so on and so forth, but I think it's irresponsible for the city to be acting in a situation where we're handing out money before we go through a budget process, where we might have reductions, or there might be cuts. I don't know what's going to happen. It's still too early to tell, so I think we need to have deliberation on the budget, and then we can look and see how we're going to fund some of these agencies. So, with that said, Mayor, I would like to have this tabled, so that we can go through the budget process first, make sure we're doing our due diligence with the budget process, and then we can take a step back and see how we can fund some of these requests from our outside agencies.
Very well. There's a motion to forward a table. Is there a second? Counsel Rzika? Clerk, if you call the roll on tabling this.
Sure. Motion to table Agreement Resolution Number 59. Counselor McCormick?
No.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
No.
Counsel Rzika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
No.
Not carried.
Not carried, very well. Discussion in regards to contract with bid. Counsel McCormick?
I appreciate Counselor Camardo's comments, I really do. I really don't see the bids as the same as the historic sites, the Auburn beautification. The history with this particular agreement is that we went to them and asked them to help us out, meaning Public Works. We had businesses downtown that were upset that the downtown area wasn't clean, the trash was blowing around, just different, it just wasn't appearing the way it should under the bid format, that people are, they pay a little extra tax in the bid area in order to get this kind of, not that service in particular, that's paid through the property taxes, but downtown is a unique area that it attracts, everybody goes downtown, the citizens, the businesses, visitors, and this agreement doesn't, it's not necessarily coming up at this time out of the blue. It was an agreement with the bid that should have been passed last fall, and I'm not trying to bring up history, but again, it, for whatever reason, did not get done, and now the bid is faced with not being able to provide the service, and I, Mike Talbot, our supervisor from Public Works, is wholeheartedly supportive of this, because it allows their staff to go to other areas that need help, need to be serviced by Public Works. This, as I pointed out last time I talked about this, the bid does a lot of what Public Works would do, so I think we're not, they're not asking us for anything other than to compensate them for the work that they're doing, and it's, I think it's a bargain, compared to what Mr. Talbot estimated would be $65,000 to $70,000 for the city to do it, including salaries and time and all that. This is $40,000, that's all it is, and it reaps benefits that you can't put a price on, by the impression that people get when they come downtown and see that it's well-maintained and cared for on a daily basis, and I worked downtown when it wasn't, and it did not look very good. So, I am 100% behind this.
Counsel Rzika, then Counsel Cuddy, please.
Okay, there's no doubt. I recognize the benefit of the bid to the city. We know what they do, and it's very, it's a nice thing to have. I can't disagree. However, the timing of this request comes at a time when the budget is just beginning to form. Now, this resolution is essentially short-stating and circumventing the budget process. I need to ask, has everyone done the math, and did you do a roll-up on all the revenues, and then do a roll-up on all the department budgets? If not, you better, and get a reality check. I need to ask, how are we going to pay for all that? It says, we have to decide what we really need and what we want, and what we want, we got to do what we want with less. The analogy's like going to a store. We got more in our shopping cart than we can pay for, so we got to prioritize what we need and decide what we put on the back on the shelf before we get to the checkout. If not, we're going to get embarrassed at the checkout when we don't have the cash to pay for it. Then you have to make an immediate decision about what to put back. Now, I know $40,000 is not a lot of money, but if you got to say to the police chief, you can't have a patrol car, or say to some city employee, maybe even a DPW, we need to let you go, or to one of the boards, sorry, we can't fund you, but look at the bright side, we got flowers downtown. I really don't think we should be doing this. We need to go through the budget process and make some hard decisions. If you can't make a hard decision now, I really have a hard time understanding how you're going to make them later.
Mayor?
Counsel Cuddy, please.
Oh, I just want to say that I support the $40,000 going towards a bid. It does save money, and, you know, one of the things that we've tried to cut, 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 and really, that really hasn't really gotten us anywhere, and I'm not done yet, but I do want to say that, you know, sometimes you do have to invest and put more into a city to make it more attractive, to make people want to come to Auburn, to make people, you know, if we let this go, and, you know, the Department of Public Works can't keep the upkeep in downtown, you know, that doesn't bode well for us as a city that's trying to bring in revenue. revenue by tourism. You know, there's a lot of things that are happening in the city that, um, are bringing people here. And the bid just serves as a good example of collaboration and partnership with the city and, and bid and, uh, private businesses. And I just think it's, it's a good idea to support that, and especially, you know, in a time where we do wanna bring in people to Auburn, to bring in more revenue to, uh, to, to the city. And I, I, that is why I'm supporting this. Sometimes you have to invest a little to get the return, and I, I just see, um, the, the, the mantra of cutting really doesn't promote growth. And what I'm interested is, is cultivating and growing this, this community.
Counsel McCormick, then Counsel Razika.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Razika mentioned that forty thousand dollars could be this or that for other places in the budget. It's ironic that the number is forty thousand tonight, I think. Forty thousand dollars overspent in legal fees to the, for the, um, to challenge the fire department, um, take 'em to court, I should say, when, um, for the last nine months, we've been paying overtime over six hundred thousand dollars. So we're about, it's seven hundred thousand dollars of wasted money. And this is the time you decide to cut back and hold on for forty thousand dollars for the part of Auburn that has become the light in the, is the shining spot for the city with the theater festival and the Auburn Public Theater, and all the people that come here from all over central New York and further to not wanna shine up and take care of our downtown. Um, it's, it's hard to even understand.
Counsel Razika.
First, I would say that it wouldn't necessarily be a total cut of the money. I would say we, it would possibly be funded at some level. I, I fully agree that we need to fund it at some level. The full mount, I can't right now justify until we're done with the budget. Now, you're talking about the fire negotiations. The whole reason we're doing those negotiations, again, is the fourteen-man minimum, which was driving overtime costs. The prior year, one year in, in Two Thousand Eleven, it was up to four, over four hundred thousand dollars in overtime costs before layoffs. So we need to look at the costs, we need to downsize that fire department, right-size it for the population. We can't continue to go and add and add and add. Where are we gonna pay for it? Who's gonna pay for all this? At some point in time, the piggy bank is empty.
Counsel, I must agree with the way that Counsel McCormick, uh, put, put it. I thought, I thought it was very poignant, that, um, it's an example of where, you know, we have, um, we had, I guess, a philosophy, uh, that, you know, "We need to cut, we need to cut." But, you know, if you just think about it that way, and you're not really looking at the total picture, you'll see that, yes, we did cut. And in doing so, we ended up losing more money than we did saving money. So I'm kind of wanting to kind of steer the ship in the other direction, which is like, okay, maybe instead of if we look to cut things and lose money, maybe if we start investing in the city, maybe we can start to make money.
Counsel Razika.
Did you do the roll-up on the, you know, the department heads' budgets and the roll-up on the revenues? Did you do that homework?
I have not done that.
Okay, so how do you know what you're even talking about here now? We are facing a huge deficit. We are going to the checkout with more stuff in the cart than we got money in our pocket to pay for. When are we gonna decide what we put back and what we can live with? We have to make these decisions. If you don't make these, this decision, at least now to look at it and see what we got left over to fund this, what are you gonna do when we have to make harder decisions about other things? I, I, it's incredible to me to understand that. I have not yet seen any plan that was allegedly touted to, to solve this financial issue yet. We have not, the budget we're just formulating, I'm sure Doug is gonna go through there and, and, and give his first call-through, and say, "These are some things that maybe we should look at and not do, fund or, or do without, or do at a lower level." The only thing we can change is our level of service, in some ways, how we perform that service, and how many people we have performing that service. That's all that's in our control. We, the, the tax levy cap is gonna fix your amount that you can get in property taxes, and by the way, the property taxes do not even cover public safety. So, to me, you have to pull your head out of the sand and realize that some point in time, how are we gonna pay for all this? I don't see a plan yet. I'm sure Doug is gonna have his first call-through, and we're gonna look at it, and I don't believe he's gonna have something in place that everybody can live with, or maybe even some people in the public can live with it. It's up to this council to decide how best and how to prioritize the money that we have to spend and pay for what's in the cart and what we put back on the shelf.
I, I agree, and I just wanna try something different than the last couple of years. That's, that's where I, so as a counselor, I'm affording myself the opportunity to look at the budget and to, but at the same time, this is in front of us now. This is, to me, money-saving, and, uh, and I would like to support this, so.
Counsel McCormick.
Uh.
And I didn't mean to, Counsel.
That's okay. To use Counselor Razika's analogy, the grocery cart, it, it's the way the budget's cycle goes. A new council comes on board, while you've already been in the store with the grocery cart on your own, up and down the aisles, doing what you wanna do, spending and putting things in the grocery cart, and then we come along in January and we're stuck with the grocery cart that you left, and we have to work with what we've got. So we're driving down the, and we see flowers, and we see downtown, and we see a coupon. I'm not, I don't know if you're familiar, but coupons come in quite handy when you're grocery shopping, and that coupon is the bid. The bid is giving us half off on the maintenance of downtown Auburn. And that's part of what you just said, was that we need to cut back, do, provide services differently, and that's what this is. It's, it's doing something differently, which they started doing ten years ago, so they must've known what they were doing. Um, and that's all I have to say. I love the analogy of the grocery cart, though. It does put a picture out there.
Counsel Camardo.
Mayor, nobody said no to this, um, bid request. The request that I made was that we look at the budget first because there's essential services in the city, that people rely on and look for. We need to get through that budget process first before we start entertaining spending money that are not directly driven by city services to the taxpayers of the city. Now, I invested in downtown Auburn twenty, over twenty years ago, Counselor. I invested heavily in downtown. Um, I'm not saying bid's not doing a good job by any means. I think it's important that we get through the process first. In regards to the past councils, we gotta stop blaming past councils. We're here now, we're accepting the responsibility to move forward. I wish I could blame all the past councils, because when I came on, we had some financial problems also. So, these things happen. It's unfortunate. People, the City of Auburn elected us to move forward, to try to get through these tough times. That's what we need to do. We can't sit here and just blame everybody. We need to take action and move forward on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel Razika.
Again, like I say, we really need to look at the budget and understand what we have available. And you continually wanna play the blame game here, which is getting us nowhere. It, it, we have to do what we have to do now. It's us that are steering the ship. So let's put our hands on the till and try and steer it the right way, but I don't see by circumventing the budget process by doing this, that we're helping anything. What if we find out we can, can't really afford forty thousand, or maybe thirty? I mean, it still gets the trash picked up downtown. Maybe it cuts down on the number of flowers. But I'm just saying, we really ought to understand at what level we can fund this.
As the elephant in the room here, do I have to?
No, no, no. Hang on one second. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, please. I'm sorry. You're out of order. I'm sorry.
I am out of order.
You are. I, Connie, Connie, please, please.
I can't speak to this.
Please, sit down.
Mayor, one more, and I, I'll be done. I just wanna, I'm not, um, playing the blame game. It is what it is as far as decisions that were made in the past, but the very reason I'm here right now is because of what was going on in the past, and there's no way I can avoid it. I wouldn't be sitting here now, I wouldn't have ran for office if I thought everything was great. If I thought things were being done for the best for the city, I wouldn't have never have ran for office. So I do bring up the past. I do point out the reasons that I ran for office. And I'm here now, and if it comes up that I have to, I have to refer back to something that's coming up now, like the Cogen, I mean, this eighty thousand dollars is, it, that whole eighty thousand dollars is money that we should never have had to transfer, ever. But we had to. So I'm not playing the blame game.
Can I call the question?
You certainly can, Counselor. The question has been called. Everyone?
Mayor, we gotta make sure that we're not getting interrupted by
Yeah.
the audience, please, when we got business to conduct here.
If I may, the rules preclude any discussion by members of the public on any issues that are being debated among the counselors, and the only time that people are allowed to speak during those discussions is if the council invites them to speak. Otherwise, the public is prohibited from joining in the discussion.
Question has been called, and I believe on the other hand, he has not spoken. I will, I weigh my last, uh, last thoughts, so I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
This puts me in a very difficult situation because I am not against this resolution. I'm just against the way the procedure's gone so far, that I think we should've went through the budget process first, so I'm gonna vote no.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Razika?
Again, I have to echo, uh, Counsel Camardo's concerns. This, this should go through the budget process. This is, needs to be determined after we go through the budget process, so I will have to vote no. It's not against the bid. They, they do a wonderful job. I wish we had enough money to maybe even fund them further, but I don't see it there.
Mayor Quill. When I was running for office many years ago, everyone in the city wanted Auburn to look like Skinny Atlas. Why can't we have Auburn look like Skinny Atlas? The biggest thing in my mind is we don't have a lake in the middle of downtown. Auburn has come, grown considerably since, uh, Two Thousand Six, Two Thousand Seven. As mayor, I've had a very little part of it. It was more the partners we had. I certainly do not want the City of Auburn to take a step backwards, so I am voting yes.
Carrie.
Counsel, this time I'm making a motion. We enter into executive session for personnel matter. Clerk, I know you have a better way of phrasing that that you, uh, prefer. Would you like to throw it in there?
Sure. The mayor is gonna make an executive, request for executive session on matters leading to the appointment of a particular person.
Can I have a second? Counsel Camardo? Call the roll for, uh, executive session.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Aye. And Mr. Rossi and Mr. Salvi will be excusing you.
Thank you.
Into session. Uh, Appointment Resolution Number Sixty of Two Thousand Fourteen. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Cuddy, seconded by Counsel Camardo? Would you like to read the resolution with a blank name, please?
Mr. Mayor?
You guys have the reso?
No, thank you.
At this point, we have a blank resolution. We're gonna ask the clerk to read it in, and then we'll entertain a motion from the floor to insert the name of the, uh, of the potential candidate, so.
Appointment Resolution Number Sixty of Two Thousand Fourteen, Appointing an Associate City Court Judge, whereas the current part-time City Court Judge's term will expire on April seventeenth, Two Thousand Fourteen, and it is necessary that an appointment be made to fill that position. And whereas pursuant to the Uniform City Court Act, Section Two One Zero Four, the authority to appoint a successor is with the Auburn City Council. And whereas the Auburn City Council has considered several applicants for the position, be it further resolved that a certified copy of this appointment resolution be filed with the Office of Court Administration. When, when you announce the name, I'll read the other two paragraphs.
Counsel, we have a, a named insert in there? Counsel Cuddy?
David Thurston.
Thurston. Do we have a second on that name?
A second and a name.
Counsel Camardo. So ladies and gentlemen, the name, yeah, the amendment, get a vote on the amendment, right? Amendment to insert the name of David Thurston into the resolution as the associate judge. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor, just, just a comment that, um, I'd like to thank all the applicants.
Can we, can we get to this point?
Okay, sure.
Counsel?
This is, uh, to amend the result, the blank resolution to insert the name of David Thurston, Seventy-Five Owosco Street, Auburn, New York. Counsel McCormick?
No.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Uh, Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. Counsel Camardo.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that, um, we're very fortunate to get a well, um, qualified list of individuals that applied for this position. I wish we could've appointed every one of them because they're excellent, excellent, um, people to come and offer to serve in this, in this position. So we're very honored to have all those individuals who are very qualified and especially are part of this community, so I'd just like to thank them for their time and, um, participation in the process.
Anyone else? Counsel Cuddy?
I wanna second Counsel Camardo's sentiments. It was a very difficult decision, and, uh, all the candidates that were, uh, that applied and were interviewed were, uh, definitely, definitely qualified. It was a very difficult decision for, uh, this council, and I can testify to that.
Being on council, this is my, going on my seventh year, this is the hardest, uh, decision we've had to make. We had four excellent candidates. Each of them had a strong point in one sort, way or another. Many of them crossed over with their strong points. But I looked at the future for the, uh, the other, I hate to call them other candidates, cause they're certainly were as qualified. We had to make a decision. Decision was made. But we look forward to their commitment to our community. It's always been there, and Auburn will be well-served by them in the future, so.
Agreed.
Other discussion? Clerk, would you call the roll on the final resolution? I believe we have to do that.
Sure. Uh, Counselor McCormick?
No.
Counsel Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Razika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carrie.
Agreement Resolution Number Sixty-One of Two Thousand Fourteen, Authorizing the Mayor Into An Op-, An Operation and Management Services Agreement. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Razika, seconded by Counsel Camardo.
Agreement Resolution Number Sixty-One of Two Thousand Fourteen, Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into An Operation and Management Services Agreement. Whereas the City of Auburn has acquired ownership of the landfill gas electric generation facility at the Auburn landfill, and whereas it is necessary that the city retain a contractor to operate the facility on a day-to-day basis and provide such other services as are required. And whereas Innovative Energy Systems LLC holds special expertise in operating and managing electrical generation facilities similar to the electricity project which the city has acquired, and Innovative employs the skilled labor necessary for such purposes. And whereas the term of the agreement is for fifteen months, commencing immediately upon the signing of the agreement, and the city will pay to Innovative the sum of twenty-two thousand dollars per month. And whereas it is necessary that the Auburn City Council authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for the operation and management of the facility with Innovative Energy Systems LLC. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn, New York City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to sign an agreement for the operation and management of the landfill gas generation facility, which has been acquired by the City of Auburn, to have Innovative Energy Systems LLC provide those services to operate the facility.
Mr. Salvi, could you give everyone here and at home a little lead-in as to what's going on here?
Sure. Uh, once the, the city made the acquisition of the facility, uh, the previous company pulled their operators off the job. Um, for the last couple of days, we've been kinda holding it together with our own staff, and we're looking forward to Innovative Energy Systems taking over. For those who might not be familiar, they are the operator of the Seneca Meadows, uh, landfill gas generation system, a much larger system, and they operate similar systems throughout the United States. Um, the agreement would be a fifteen-month agreement. At about twelve months, we plan to take a close look at whether we wanna keep them on, renew their contract past fifteen months, or possibly take over the operation with city staff. Along the way- Along the way, Innovative has offered to help educate and, and train our staff on the operation of the facility so that we do have the ability to evaluate our, whether, whether it's reasonable for us to possibly take it over in the future.
Discussion by council? Please call the roll.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill?
Aye. Council Resolution Number 62. Trying to write notes, Counsel, just bear with me. Council Resolution Number 62 of 2014, changing a meeting date. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor McCormick.
Council Resolution Number 62 of 2014, changing a meeting date. Whereas the rules of the Auburn City Council and city charter require that the Auburn City Council hold its regular meetings on Thursdays. And whereas a meeting scheduled for the third Thursday in April will fall on April 17, 2014. And whereas the City of Auburn will observe Friday, April 18, 2014, as Good Friday, and Good Friday is officially recognized as a holiday by the city. And whereas many members of the Auburn community will observe Thursday, April 17, 2014, as Holy Thursday. And whereas the Auburn City Council desires to reschedule the meeting for the third week in April of 2014, from Thursday, April 17, 2014, to Tuesday, April 15, 2014, at 6:00 P.M. Said meeting to take place in council chambers, Memorial City Hall, 24th South Street in Auburn. And whereas the subsequent meetings will return to the Thursday of each week thereafter at its usual time, 6:00 P.M. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Auburn City Council does hereby move the Auburn City Council meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 17, 2014, at 6:00 P.M., to Tuesday, April 15, 2014, at 6:00 P.M., for the purposes of a business meeting, and that all subsequent meetings thereafter shall be on Thursday of each week unless modified by subsequent council resolution. And the clerk is hereby requested to notify the public of the change in the meeting date as set forth herein.
Counsel, this is a resolution that takes place every year and to afford to everyone their ability to attend services, so. Discussion? Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McCormick?
Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill? Carrie.
Local laws?
No local laws.
Table legislation.
Bond ordinance number one.
Reconsideration of bond ordinance number one of 2014, authorizing the issuance of serial bonds for the city water supply and distribution system. Excuse me, do we have a sponsor? Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy. Mr. Rossi, would you be opposed to waiving the reading? It's been done a couple of times, or was it?
I think it's been read at least twice, probably third ti, three times, and unless council wants it read again, I think that everyone understands the scope and the amount involved in this resolution.
Anyone? Does everyone go along with waiving the reading?
Mayor Quill promised we'd be out in 10 minutes, so.
You may want to just read the first paragraph, just so people know where we're at.
Would you like, Counselor?
Just that.
Bond ordinance number one of 2014, bond ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $3,400,000 serial bonds to finance the cost of the reconstruction of the city water supply and distribution system.
Counsel, how would you like to proceed in this? Counselor Camardo?
I'm just going to make some comments, please, if I could, Mayor. Over the last couple, or at least the last 30 days, we've had an opportunity as a council to debate this issue very well. I think everybody's under the understanding, at least I am, that we need to invest in our infrastructure. It's very important for the community, for infrastructure needs that we have. We all recognize that. We all support it. There's been comments, or there's been concerns on my end of it, how we looked at the fund balance, how would we fund some of this project. We had discussions on the funding of it. There's been analysis by staff that look at and see that there's a healthy fund balance. So what I'd like to do at this time is I'd like to amend the resolution to state that we bond for $2 million, and we take 1.4 out of our fund balance to, to fund this project and move it along. It's a motion.
It's a motion. Do we have a second?
May I ask a question?
Not yet.
Not, Mr. Rossi, not until we get it, once we get a second, then we can
Discuss it.
Discuss it. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Resika. Counselor Cuddy, the floor is yours.
The floor is mine. All right. I am interested in, in, there's been a, there's a presentation that I think the public should know, the pros and cons of what we should bond for, and, and giving the amount. I do want to give the public the chance to, to hear and see those pros and cons in council. So my question is, if, if this is, if this motion is turned down, can there be another ti, can, can there be another chance to amend it? If, if, just so that, so that, because I wanted, I was hoping that we would discuss this issue, since it has basically taken a month to get to this point.
The amount of the bond ordinance can be amended, and there is a motion to amend right now for the reduced amount. That has to be disposed of before you do anything.
Okay.
All right.
Counselor McCormick?
Could, could we ask either the city manager or our comptroller what amending this, what the impact would be to, I know they recommended what we are, what is in front of us, but I, I think we should know what that means.
Or should we get through this, and, because we, apparently we can, if this does not, if the amendment doesn't pass?
I think you should vote on the amendment first, and then
But I don't want to vote on the amendment until I know what the impact is.
But we can, we can put another amendment on if need be. I, I, I'm sorry. I, again, correct me if I'm right.
We should vote on the amendment, and then you can have further discussion based on the original ordinance that
Is presented.
Right.
Counselor Resika?
Yes, I have to know on the fund balance, it looks like there was a, sort of a little bit more money that was found. And again, like I say, all this was a result of Counselor Camardo's due diligence and understood.
Counsel, we're going to cut you off right there. We could, we're still, address this. Let's address the motion, and then you'll certainly have your time.
Okay.
Clerk, would you call the roll in regards to amendment to
Sure, there's an amendment to amend from 3.4 million, the bond, down to 2 million for the bond.
Is that correct, Counsel?
Yes.
Correct. Counselor McCormick?
Without being able to ask a question, I can't, I'll have to vote no. I would probably consider it, but I have to vote no.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
I'm going to vote no, because I really think that we have spent the last month and a half going through this, the staff has prepared scenarios. I think the people of Auburn need to see those scenarios so that we can, so that they know why we're doing. I do support in this, during this meeting, to amend the bond at some point in time, but I think we need to go through this process tonight to get there. So I'm going to vote no for the amendment now.
Counselor Resika?
I agree with this amendment. We have this money. This is what it's intended to do, is to, is to maintain the, the system. This is money that will basically lower debt service. I, I don't see where this should be a problem. In fact, if, if, again, I really feel that we need to use this money, and if, for the lack of a better term, I support this amendment, and I feel that it's very important it, it go through. So I'm saying yes.
Mayor Quill?
I'm voting no, because we still have the ability to amend this. I do want to hear also from staff, is, is it what our, as I recall, we have three scenarios there that can be worked through, so I'm voting no.
Does not, Carrie.
So with that, with counsel, with you, if you're all right with that, I'd ask Laura and the city manager to bring everyone up to speed as to where we're at.
While Laura's sitting up here, we provided you with the materials that you're going to see on the screen earlier. There's a copy in front of you. It does include a new scenario that was developed at council's request, so I'll let Laura walk through the whole package, and hopefully it will help council make a decision.
Okay. We're going to discuss the three scenarios that we gave out last week and an additional The first couple of slides just show the water and water capital balance sheets and financial position at 319, which was when this was originally prepared. So you can see we have about 2.39 in fund balance, but as I've stated before, fund balance doesn't necessarily mean it's spendable. It doesn't mean it's cash. We currently at 319 have $3 million in current capital project obligations outstanding.
Laura, let's just stop right there for a second. When you talk about obligations, as I stated in the past, we have proper bond authorization for those project obligations, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
For some of them, for, for the ones that we bonded for.
Right.
Yes. So then we did an available balance calculation. This shows just the total cash, and I added in any liquid assets, took out any obligations that we currently owe, to come down to what I would consider to be available to spend. That's about $1.5 million, I believe, is available for spending.
Can I just ask a question before you move on? Now, you've got a potential owed to HF is $61,000. What does that potential mean?
The potential means, I have yet to trace exactly that small amount that's exactly, when you reconcile all the capital projects, there's some old ones that might not be zeroed out, so I'm still going back and looking for that. I took it out of the available because I wanted to be conservative.
Now, as we move forward, the $350,000 that you get for revolving fund, that'll be coming money coming back, because we loan that money out for people in next, through the next five years if they take advantage of their program. That'll be money coming back, correct?
That is actually money that we transferred to a revolving loan fund, and therefore it's going to go back into the revolving loan fund, not come back into operations unless council decides and makes a resolution to send it back to the water operating
At some stage of the game, it'll come back to the fund because you'll fix the water, the laterals out there.
Perhaps if that's what council decides they want to do instead of leaving it in the fund, but also we have to consider that staff has determined that there's 300 meters, approximately $2,500 apiece. This is only half of what we have to transfer.
That's if everybody takes advantage of the program.
If everyone takes advantage.
Now, according to your other calculations, and I asked you about this a couple of weeks ago, you, we had $400,000 for the Franklin Street project that was taken out of the water fund about two years ago, I believe. It's still in your calculations, I see. Have you made any adjustments on that at all?
What do you mean, it's still in the calculation?
It's still in your calculations about obligations that are due to contractors?
It's, it's included in there because it was part of the budget for that project.
But we paid for that already, correct?
Correct, which means that money already went over, which means it has to still be there to pay for the project. Does that make sense? Are you, no? Can you explain further?
Oh, go ahead. I, I'll catch up with you as soon as you get farther down the line.
Our first scenario is to bond in stages. The pros to bonding in stages is that the cost will be spread over the life of the system. In this scenario, rates will increase slightly at 1% each year to eliminate any rate shock. Fund balance will initially grow and then be used to mitigate rate increases beginning in 2020. And 2020 is when all the bands will convert into bonds, and therefore the interest will be higher, so it'll start eating into fund balance. Bonding will also allow other projects in the capital plan to be initiated without any dramatic increases. The problem with this scenario is that the users will pay interest in bond issuance costs, and there will be two major shutdowns to the water system. Also, funding through the EFC is less likely with smaller amounts, and we'll also have two, two instances of issuance costs. For the bonding of stages, these are the stages of the $3.4 million. You can see that stage one is about 1.3 million. Stage two is 2.1 million. There's also additional capital improvement projects that are upcoming and necessary in the next year or so. The South Street repaving project is a big one. You just authorized the bids for that last week. That's $1.5 million. What staff is requesting or recommending, I guess, is that we use that available cash for this $1.5 million, because it's already, the project's already authorized, and it's happening this summer. And therefore, instead of going out to bond partially for one project and fully for the other project, we bond fully for one project and pay fully in cash for the South Street repaving project.
But what happened on that project when you didn't have the money to do that? We were going to have to bond for it anyway. You just found the $1.5 million, right? We just found it two weeks ago?
We were initially going to bond. So you can see this scenario. One, these are the expected projected rates, projected fund balance levels and additions to our use of fund balance. You'll see that in 2020, we begin to use fund balance, and will continue to use fund balance until some debt falls off in 2023 to 2028. That's current debt that we've already issued. At that time, fund balance will be used so that we don't have to increase rates. Scenario number two is pay-as-you-go. The pros to this is that there's no bond issuance or interest costs. Another problem with this, though, is that there's two major shutdowns to the water system. You'll have to fund it in stages, increased overall cost due to multiple contractors. We'll exhaust fund balance down to what we consider a critical level or what we should keep in our reserves. There's likely support from the general fund. As you can see on the balance sheet, while I consider them liquid, receivables are about $400,000, $440,000. So if we go down to that $400,000 reserve level, part of what we're considering available is 400, or, part of what we're considering available is that $440,000 worth of receivables. So there's a chance that we would have to float some money from the general fund or hold off paying contractors. If you look at scenario two, you'll see that in 2016, we come down to almost $400,000 in fund balance, which is below 10% of our expenditures. Scenario number three is bond in total. The pros are that the cost will be spread over the life of the system. There's only one major shutdown to the system. Rates will increase slightly at 1%. And in all of these scenarios, we put rates increasing at 1% just to eliminate any dramatic increases to rates. 1% is only about 2 and 1/2 cents, so. Bonding will allow other projects in the capital plan to be initiated without dramatic increases, and there's only one set of issuance costs for this bond. The cons are that the users will pay interest in bond issuance costs, and interest will begin to be repaid earlier. This is just the details of what we would bond for in scenario three. It's the same as scenario one, except for it's all at once.
And that's the original?
This, yeah, this is the original bond ordinance. You can see that our fund balance stays healthy. In, in 2020, again, it begins to get eaten away by the debt that, from when the bands turn into bonds. Scenario four is the new scenario. This is when we use partial fund balance and partial bond. The cost will be spread over the life of the system for the most part. We'll keep the rates at 1% a year. This is going to address the uncertainty of the final cost. We'll be able to do the engineering ahead of time, and therefore, there was some uncertainty of what the final cost will be. The best estimate right now is $3.4 million, but we haven't done the engineering yet, so this will address that issue. So this will address that issue. Fund balance will initially grow and then be used to mitigate rate increases in 2020. Cons are that the users will pay interest in bond issuance costs. There will be two major shutdowns to the water system and funding through EFC is less likely in smaller amounts.
Why would there be two shutdowns? If you're financing the whole project, why would there have to be two shutdowns?
This one isn't financing, it's using the 1.3 and then the 2.
But then you're bonding for the rest and doing the whole, all the whole task.
Right.
Could we do, could we only do one shutdown if we pay, I mean, what?
With the $2 million and taking money out of fund balance, you'd only have one shutdown, I believe, if you're financing the whole amount.
You got the whole amount there.
Yeah.
I'm not the finance guy, obviously, although I understand what's going on with it. But if we're going to be doing this and you stage it.
I wasn't talking.
You're asking about the shutdowns.
Yeah.
I'm addressing the shutdowns.
But I'm not talking about staging, though. I'm saying $2 million that we'd bond for and the rest would come out of fund balance so the project would be fully supported.
The way that they're engineering this, the way that it would have to be engineered, from what my understanding of it was, was that financing it this way causes the engineering plan to have to stage the project to, which would require two separate shutdowns of the work.
Why would you have to stage it? I don't understand.
Because work is part of the project is at the treatment plant itself and the other part of the project involves the lower pumping station.
I understand it, but if we're completely financing the whole project, why would you have two different?
Like I said before, I'm not at the financial end event, I'm at the technical.
I need to ask Laura that question, then.
So.
Or Christina, would you be able to answer the question?
Anyway, I'll go over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If there is an allocation of a mix of cash and bond, we should be able to do it in one shutdown, we're hoping. It's not a guarantee, as long as the timing of backup pumps and other things are available at that time. I don't know if we can work that quickly on lower pump station. Obviously, the priority is the water filtration plant and addressing the concrete wall before the next winter cycle.
And hearing that, to clarify the issue then, most of the work that we'd be doing on the pump station, like what we found out with Franklin Street, are not off-the-shelf items. Most of the work that would have to be done either in the present station or in a replacement would be items that have a very long lead time for ordering, as opposed to the work that is done at the filtration plant itself. Most of that work is items that have a shorter lead time for ordering or construction that has to be done right at the plant itself. So that could be a potential reason, as the financing comes online, why doing bonding and funding versus a single funding in place might require two shutdowns rather than one.
If there's cash available tomorrow and we sell a band tomorrow, the financing's going to be there.
Yeah.
So there shouldn't be any problem in moving forward with it.
Those same issues that you brought up would be existing regardless of if it was financed, fully funded by a bond or by the partial use of funds and a bond, which both totaled the same amount of cash.
I understand what you're saying, but then, like I said, once you enter the real world in a project, you don't always find that it aligns exactly the way you envision it.
Understood, but that risk is present in either scenario.
That's right.
That's true.
That's right, Peter.
Counselor Cuddy.
That's true.
I, as everyone knows, I've always been very supportive of the full bonding of $3.4 million, specifically because of the ability to receive funding through EFC at the lowest interest rate, which I think would help our taxpayers. Is there a threshold between $2 million and $3.4 million that could at least get us into the EFC funding? I mean, I don't want it to be to the point where it's $3.3 million because I'm, I know that it won't pass. I mean, I really do want the council to come together to pass something, but what is that threshold?
I don't know if there's a threshold, per se. When we ask for financial hardship status with EFC, we're trying to demonstrate that on certain levels, the city is in need of 0% financing because fiscal constraints, you know, issues with, you know, whatever our community demographics are at that point. So to allocate, you know, $1.5 million or so to a project from a fund balance, it's going to be a little difficult to demonstrate to the state that we need 0% financing for this project. So that could cause a problem. What it does leave us with is potential market rate financing with the state, which could be better than our conventional. But, you know, at this point, they're still reviewing our application. I have not received our determination letter yet from EFC.
Counselor Ruzika.
Okay, well, regardless, I think that the state would want to know what you had in the fund balance anyhow, and if you had something that was usable, I would think that they would insist that you use that first. So we're not going to, we're not going to keep, you know, I'm sure, like any other bank, they're going to want to know what you have cash in hand.
They do want to know that, counselor, but to assume that they would automatically make a decision solely on it isn't necessarily true.
I understand, but I think, I don't see where, again, there's opportunities that were just listed that we could even get a better rate and another method. So to that aspect, I see that there's more advantage in using some fund balance and then bonding the balance.
Counselor Cuddy, do you have a follow-up question?
I was just going to ask, what, do you have a recommendation for the, how you would, does the recommendation follow the next page as far as, you know, we would, we would put $1.3 million from the fund balance? Is this what these, stage one and stage two represent? So, and stage two would be the lower pump station, the 2.1, which would be the recommendation for bonding for the 2.1? That's the recommendation?
Are you looking for recommendations?
Yeah, so is that what this means, the recommendation?
I mean, staff's recommendation has been to fully fund the project from the beginning. The, how that comes about is up to council and your policy.
Christina, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but did I hear you say that scenario four, there's a possibility it could be set up so there would only be one shutdown? It's a possibility that, I don't want to put words in your mouth as I say.
As our chief operator said, I don't know how quickly we can order the backup pump, the replacement pumps that we need for lower pump station, particularly since we haven't studied all the alternatives. If we can get in there, replace what we need to, or do we have to look at something else and be a little more creative? So I'm not so sure. I'm not confident the timing will work for just one shutdown. However, bonding in stages does create other costs along the line. So doing a mix of cash and bonding to fully authorize the project would make sense. We have other projects coming up that we could use the cash for, so it's whether or not you want to use it now or do you want to use it this summer for other projects that we'll need that for.
Tony, one second, Counsel. When you, when you talk about a major shutdown, what type of length are we, a rough idea, a day, an hour?
Well, to give you an example, one of the shutdowns requires that we take the rapid sand plant at the filtration plant site out of service because part of the project involves the rebuilding of the flume that supplies the three rapid sand filters. That would have to be reconstructed because it's failing now and would be a shutdown that could be a few days to up to two weeks. Now, it's not only that shutdown that we're concerned about, but at the time of year also. Although winter isn't considered to be the most favorable time of year to do construction, it would be ideal for us to do that because it's when our water usage is at its lowest point and we could use the 1917 slow sand plant to give us a complete supply, is to not interrupt service. That would be the shutdown for that plant. At the pump station, we're still looking at exactly how to approach that and at the manager's request, I've started conversation with Owosco to look at opening valves between them and us, to have them aid in supplying us during a shutdown. Now, exactly how we go about doing that work is something we're still investigating, but it might involve shutting down that pump station, which supplies the pressure not only to us and fill the reservoir, but to the entire system and all our consecutive systems. And that could be a shutdown that could be as long as a day or slightly longer than a day. All right? So that would mean using the reservoir.
So if, as every, all of us have discovered in construction, never, nothing ever goes to schedule, no matter.
No.
No matter all the contingencies in place, it doesn't work that way.
Right. And what I'd like to add, though, is we did find out during the Tinkers fire, we would plan that ahead of time in both cases and have a contingency plan worked out in advance, not only with our consecutive systems, but with fire control also, so that in the event of something like that occurring, we'd be ready to deal with it. But those are, that's the nature of those shutdowns.
Counselor Ruzika.
I still see, but the risks that we're just outlining right now exist in either fashion, whether we, because we're fully funded in both areas, these, these are, have the potential to exist under either one of these conditions. It's not isolated to one funding method versus another for a fully funded system.
That's true.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, as far as make this, adding to this decision, that's, it's a wash. They're both equal.
That's possible. I can't commit to that either way.
I understand.
Unlike you, I'm not an engineer, understand? I work in operations.
Understood.
Okay? And what you've done is asked not only me, but other members of the staff to give you recommendations based on our experience and our, and our understanding of our knowledge. And that's what we've done. And these are the scenarios we present. Now, there may be some disagreement on those things, but we've made the recommendations and this is what they are.
But, but the risks that you just outlined happen under either funding condition of a fully funded project.
That's right.
So as far as that being a weighing factor, tipping the scale on the pan for one funding factor versus the other, it's a net wash.
It could be. And as I'm certain, as we move forward with this, whichever way we approach it, there's the likelihood I'm going to be standing before you with a potential for a change order because I can't see the future. All I can do is make my best professional estimation based on what I can see so far, which is what we've done.
Very good.
Counselor, I wasn't hanging my head on that. I'm trying to determine the length of a possible shutdown, whether once or twice.
You're looking at, you're looking at about a day for the pump station and up to two weeks at the plant with contingencies in place that we're studying.
Counselor Cuddy, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, there's, I just want to clear up the issue here because there's going to be one shutdown because we're funding the full amount. It doesn't change one thing. Matter of fact, if we have cash in hand to buy pumps and do things, I think we can do that quicker than we can bond for or to sell bands. So this way is going to be probably a faster method of getting the project up and running.
Counselor McCormick.
I originally had one thing, I'm up to three now. The first thing is, I wanted to clarify, funding through EFC is 0% or 1%?
It could be both. It depends upon how generous they are with their program this year.
But, so the, you alluded to other funding and that would be more.
Yes.
So we're talking about.
They offer several funding mechanisms.
But they're higher than whatever.
So it would be their traditional market rate financing that they offer. They pool across the state, everyone's borrowing and do sort of this mega borrowing in essence then that does help to lower their interest rates that they're able to pass on to the communities.
But, but the EFC was the best case, the lowest rate?
If we can get into their financial hardship program, which you have to apply to before the market rate financing comes available.
Which we've been trying to do.
That would, that's why I need the bond, to apply for market rate.
So this would be a money saver as far as the rate.
So we would hope so.
Yeah.
Yes.
It has the potential to be.
Right. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the, the risk, yes, there's always risk no matter what with this, the condition that this infrastructure is in, it's a risk just being there. I think that the issue that I think the staff is trying to address is how if the worst or the, something happened, how it's financed will, I think if I understand this right, will expedite how it's, a risk could be addressed. Is that correct? If you have bonding the whole thing, if something went wrong or you needed a piece of equipment or whatever.
Whichever way we, go ahead. You first.
My understanding of how you wanted the last scenario put together was not accurate. I thought you wanted to do a, like, scenario two where we bonded and, we did it in separate stages, so I would agree with the, with the one. So I agree that there's no difference in the total.
In the risk, well, there's no difference, but there's risk no matter which way, I agree. But, well, if you've got to go out and, if the funding isn't there, if this general fund money isn't there when you go to, when you need it, that will be a problem, won't it?
Yes, we do recommend leaving at least $400,000 in reserve for if something comes up. And that was included in our available balance.
So bonding for the whole thing is the best recommendation based on everybody's combined professional opinion. It's the best, the way to go for the project as a whole, except for if we don't pass it.
I think.
I've got one more question, don't, don't.
Let her finish.
I'm not interrupting at all.
Okay.
Please, Laura.
I, I think that we should probably use some fund balance for one project or another. With leaving a reserve in there, I think it would be prudent to do so, whether it's this project or bonding in total for this project and using it, the money for the South Street project. It's what you guys decide to do.
Thank you. And one last thing is that when you talk about a shutdown, could, describe what a shutdown would mean to the citizens of Auburn. What is, I mean, even if you have to have a shutdown to do something, what would that mean to the businesses and different service?
Okay, I'll give you two scenarios very quickly. 2010, we had the potential for a shutdown when we had to replace five feet of the main on Franklin Street at the corner of North Herman. Before we even prepared for that, the potential for that shutdown meant, because it meant an interruption to the water supply for us and the consecutive systems. That meant coordinating with the emergency management system, 911, and meant coordinating with the county health department. It meant having the businesses and the institutions that rely on water to have advanced notice to be able to have emergency water supplies on hand in the event, the schools, the prison, the hospital, so that they could be aware during the period, the critical period of that repair, that should water be interrupted, they would be ready. And then we gave them the times that that would happen and coordinated with them and we brought in extra staff, as did the health department, not only to make, but to field calls during the period of time that that repair was being made. And that worked and they were aware of it. On the other hand, we have taken that wall out of service at the water plant and shut that plant down twice now to make assessment of its condition. But with proper preparation, we've been able to do that and had the health department and some of the larger users notified that they might notice a drop in pressure. But to take that plant out of service for only a few hours to do work like that went seamlessly and unnoticed by the general population, with only fire control and emergency management aware that we were doing it. Now, doing that repair could be done under those same circumstances. The old plant has the capacity to carry the whole system with the reservoir for that period of time. So we could schedule that for, no, in this case, for up to, up to possibly two weeks. I'd be more comfortable with a 10-day window. Now, taking the lower station out of service for a period of time to do a switch over has never been done. I'm working with the engineers to work out our scenario, how that would work. And as I said before, I asked Mr. Selby for permission to negotiate with the town of Owosco to work with them so that we can possibly have them pumping into our system during that period of time. We would be solely on the reservoir. We've, okay? That puts it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Mr. Selby, you on the way in here?
Yeah, I don't want to confuse things, but before I got into city management, I did water as a director of engineering for a large water agency and literally hundreds of millions of dollars of water projects. I can tell you, at this point in time, it's way too early to say with any certainty what kind of shutdowns we're going to require, how much the project ultimately is going to cost, what kind of complexities we're going to run into. We really need to get into the project, get the engineering done. As we saw in Franklin Street, I think when we started that project, we thought we were going to have shutdowns right and left. But after the engineering was done and network analyses were done, we found. But after the engineering was done and network analyses were done, we found that that pipeline could be replaced with very few shutdowns. On the other hand, I don't think we can say with certainty that one shutdown would be enough or sufficient even with full funding. So, I wanted to frame our, our pros and cons, because, you know, nothing's certain in a project like this.
No.
They're complicated, and especially when you're rehabbing something old. The other thing is, all these scenarios will work.
Yes, it will.
You know, staff, staff recommends one, but they can all be made to work. You know, it's, it's a question of the, the pros and cons being balanced. And finally, I think the EFC financing may be available zero percent for this project. It may not be available for the other water projects. So, bonding a larger amount for this single project may get us a little further ahead financially than bonding a smaller amount, because these other projects are coming down the road, $3.3 million worth of them, and they're going to have to be bonded too, or we use fund balance.
And if I can just conclude, you know, to build on that, as he said, we're, we're very early in the planning stage. We're like on step three of a, of an 80, 80-step process. Any of these, any of these plans will work as long as we have the fluidity to be able to adapt to the changes we may find.
It sounds-
That's the key.
Counsel Carmo.
It sounds like to me that the most effective way to go ahead with this would be use fund balance, so we can finance the engineering costs that will identify the total cost of this whole project.
Right now.
Right now. Right. And I'm glad the manager came up with that scenario, because we would be funding that engineer's report immediately. It wouldn't have to be, go through bonding and so on and so forth. And God forbid that it came back even higher, and we could go out for more funding, you know, possibly a higher bonding amount, God forbid if the project was even more.
How soon can we get the engineers to work once we make a decision?
I believe it's a tabled agreement resolution, so we're able to bring that back even as soon as next week if you wanted, but that's work session, so we could do on the, we could do it on, if it's time-sensitive, as counsel deems.
Counsel.
If it's time-sensitive to me.
I think that was tabled. I think that was on the original, with the, with the agenda.
Clerk just informed me, he does have the tabled resolution in front of him, so we could actually bring it back tonight if that was the wish of counsel to move this forward.
Well, we should vote on the, we'll vote on the, come to terms where we are. I, you know, after seeing and hearing all of the, the analyses and the scenarios, there's two that I particularly support. One is bonding in full, but I also agree with, I also agree that, that scenario, scenario four, partial bond and partial use of reserves, which is Counsel Camardo's recommendation, is also, is also viable. So, I mean, my first choice, obviously, would be bonding in full, but I do want to see the council come together and to see, to see the work start to get done. So, if we do, if we do get this bond ordinance passed tonight, I, I hope to eventually later this evening, we could bring the table legislation.
Could I, could I ask for my amendment to be reviewed again?
I believe so. Is that correct, Mr. Russell?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Could I ask that my amendment be reviewed again by counsel?
Okay, let's go back to what it was.
$2 million in bonding and $1,004,000 in fund balance.
Okay. Do you have a second for that amendment?
I'll second it.
Counsel, so, hold, just one second. Counsel Camaro is reintroducing his original amendment, and it was a second by Counsel Cuddy. Everyone on, Counselor?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to check in with the comptroller one more time.
Do you have anything to say?
Comptroller.
The only, the only other comment I have is that there is a potential for another $350,000 transfer to fund the water revolving fund, just for your consideration.
Thanks.
Laura, we have a rule around here, the comptroller comes in with good news. So, we have, we have a motion on the floor to reintroduce Counsel Camardo's amendment. And we have a second, so clerk, if you'll call the roll.
So, this amendment is to amend bond ordinance number one to change the amount of the bond from $3.4 million to $2 million.
Correct.
Counsel McCormick.
I really want to, I really believe that the, to bond the full amount is the way to go, and I'm going to vote no.
Counsel Camaro.
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy.
I'm, I believe that bonding for the full amount is the way to go, but I, I need to say that for the interest of seeing this project move forward, it is a project that I've invested many sleepless nights with. And there is a, there is a staff, there is engineers, there are people that need to get to work to, to get our infrastructure back in place. I cannot stall one more minute. I am going to vote so that we can move forward, so I'm going to vote yes.
Counsel Resika.
I'm going to be voting in the board, in support of this. This is the way we should be using our fund balance. The fund balance is meant to be used to maintain an, an infrastructure and stabilize rates. Right now, we have a need for infrastructure rework. Thanks to Counsel Camardo's diligence, we have this fund balance, recognize that it's in place, and we should use it. The debt services, if you look at your scenarios, goes down significantly. So, I'm going to say yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
The amendment is carried.
Now, we have to vote on the entire-
The bond.
Bond. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that is already on the floor?
Yep.
Further discussion? Counsel, once again, needs four votes to pass, because it is a bond. Clerk, if you call the roll, please, on ordinance number, I lost track of it here somewhere.
Bond ordinance number one of 2014. I'll read the title one more time. Bond ordinance of the City of Auburn, New York, authorizing the issuance of $2 million serial bonds to finance the cost of the reconstruction of the city water supply and distribution system. Counsel McCormick?
No.
Counsel Camaro?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy.
Before I vote, we have a litany, a list, a, just a, a line of bond ordinances that are, that are coming up. And, and they're all about infrastructure, and they're all about the livelihood and, and the, the, the mechanics, the heart and soul of this community. We need to come together as a council and make sure that the, the bread and butter, the things that, that make this community whole, this infrastructure, are in place. I'm voting yes, so that we can move forward on this bond ordinance and get clean, safe drinking water to people, the people of Auburn as soon as possible. Yes.
Counsel Resika.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
This is the way government is supposed to work. We're, both sides working together to solve a common problem, and I'm, I'm glad we've come to this conclusion. I am certainly voting yes.
Carried.
Now, we have a table resolution. Counsel, are you interested in entertaining that for engineering services? May I have that? Clerk?
Yep.
Is this in, this regard to the water project? Yes.
On February 20th, the night that the bond ordinance number one was first tabled, the council also tabled agreement resolution number 30 of 2014, titled authorizing a professional engineering services agreement with CRA for the city water supply and distribution system. CRA is the name of the engineering firm. Canistoga.
So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to-
Take it off the table.
Take it off the table. Counsel resolution, what number is it?
Thirty.
Number thirty. Do we have a sponsor? Counsel Resika, do we have a second? You're not going to be quick with the minutes tonight, are you, Counsel Mason? Would you care to read the resolution, please?
I never think you guys can top the previous week. Motion to take off the table. Counsel McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camaro?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. Now, to read the, read the resolution into the record? Is that correct?
Okay. Agreement resolution number 30 of 2014, authorizing a professional services agreement with Canistoga Rovers and Associates for the city water supply and distribution system improvement project. Whereas the City of Auburn Water Filtration Plant Pumping Stations and Distribution System provide drinking water for nearly 45,000 customers in Keewee County, and whereas the water system requires capital infrastructure improvements to the buildings, equipment, pumps, and motors at the Rapid Sand Filter Plant Sediment Basin, Sedimentation Basin, lower pump station and upper pump station structures. And whereas, the City of Auburn has requested and received a professional engineering services proposal from Canistoga Rovers and Associates, CRA, in the amount of $348,900 for services related to the planning and regulatory compliance, design and engineering and construction inspection services for the water supply and distribution system improvement project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Auburn, New York, that it does hereby authorize the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with CRA of Buffalo, New York, at a cost not to exceed $348,900 to be charged to a designated capital account entitled Water Plant and Pumping Stations, account number HF8330.440.HD.
Discussion? But it's worn down. Please call the roll.
Counsel McCormick?
Aye.
Counsel Camaro?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Resika?
Yes, since we have the money now, we should be able to turn this engineering firm right on without having any delay. Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carried.
I don't believe we have any other table legislation.
The only, the only thing that comes to my mind tonight, based on everything you've done here, is there may be a need to be a resolution to transfer the money from the water account back to the water capital account.
Comptroller.
Is that right?
Yes.
I don't know if you want, if that needs to happen tonight or if it can happen in two weeks, but.
How about next week?
We could do it next week. We could change the resolution. Could we change the resolution to have it paid out of regular water and then transferred later?
We already passed the resolution.
Okay.
We probably could have amended it, you're right.
But you're not going to be making any payments to that firm for-
Yeah.
-probably 30 days or so, I would assume.
Two weeks.
Okay. Yeah, two weeks is good.
Two weeks.
Yep.
All right. Your turn, counsel.
Other business, mayor, just a few things, if I could, please. Counselor, you talked about that we have many projects coming forward, and these projects are very important projects of the city. And Doug, I asked you a couple of weeks ago that we list all these projects, and we not only ask all our state representatives, but we also ask our federal representatives that if there's any money available, that they would help us in these areas. They find money for every different thing. I know they helped us with the Showmobile with $100,000, so I think we got to be out there. We got to be asking them for, these are important projects, and somehow they find the money. In regard to these projects coming up, and I think it's very important that we, as a council, start to talk about a fiscal plan. A fiscal plan over the next five years, 10 years, on how we're going to pay for these projects. There's a lot of projects coming forth that are going to need detention. And with our shrinking demographics in our community, unfortunately, who's going to pay these bills when we got all these projects coming forward? So, we, as a council, really need to spend time looking at how we're going to fund these, not only for today and tomorrow, but long-term. You know, when we keep putting this debt back on our children and our grandchildren, federal government's doing the same thing right now. We need to be cognizant of that. We need to be aware of that, how long we're going on with these projects, how long we're funding them, and who's going to pay the bill down the road. And I hope that the city turns around in record time, and I'm hopeful of that, and we can all be hopeful of that. The second thing that I want to talk about tonight is, I think, Doug, I'd like to have a resolution brought back to council, authorizing RFP for an operations budget or audit in the city. I think an operation audit is very important. We got a new comptroller on. I, I know she's relying on some information that she inherited, that's a very difficult situation to have. We've been without a comptroller for a couple of years now, on and off, without a person that's been in there very, you know, that's, hasn't been in there all the time. And when you look at accounting, accounting is, is a measure of different transactions that happen. And you might be relying on information that happened today, but there was an indirectly wrong transaction made two, three years ago on the information you're relying on. So, as we're talking about, we got to give our staff, and we got to give our employees the tools to work with, I think that it's very important that we look at the city conducting complete operations budget of all of our finances here. We owe it to the taxpayers of this community, we owe it to the council, we owe it to our department heads and our, and our, of course, our comptroller, who relies on this information all the time. So, I think we got to look at that. Doug, you made a comment on your sheet here earlier that you would need somebody to help out with how in-depth an operations audit would, would look at. I think there, we talked about the audit committee turning into a financial review board. I'd like to have some, have some discussion on that, so they could help us in this area. I was fortunate, I was hoping that the financial restructuring board for local governments would be able to come in, but I think that door has been closed by the majority of council. So, this is one area that's very important. A city cannot operate financially impaired. We got to start moving forward. I know we got competent people in there, very aware of that, but they're relying on information that needs to be updated. We need to have a team come in here and make sure our books are on order, so we can turn them over to the new comptroller. She can make sure that they're updated and continue to update them throughout the process, but we need to rely on good, accurate information. And the things that happened in the past couple of weeks can't happen again, and I hope don't happen again. So, with those couple of things, I'd like to ask that you bring those couple of options forward, that we contact our local, state, federal officials on helping us with infrastructure, that we start seriously considering a fiscal plan for the city, and also that we're in dire straits of an operational audit from this for the city. So, I think those three areas, I'd like to have attention.
Agree.
Counsel Cuddy.
Doug, we all set on that? Just so? Yes.
Yes.
I just want to at least put my two cents in on Counsel Camaro's request. And obviously, the request should be considered. I-
I could just interrupt you, Counsel. McCormick said it last week, and I agree with her. You can vote for it or you can vote against it. So, if it comes forward in front of council, we'll have that opportunity to vote for something or against something.
Yes, but I, I do think that, I, I think it should be fair to the, the city staff that, that they are very aware of the state and federal opportunities and aid, and I hope that they are looking for the kinds of opportunities that, that are out there. So, I agree with you, Counsel Camaro, that, that, that that should be, that, that should be considered, but I, I really wanted to say that, that they have their radar on for, for these various, various opportunities. As far as an operational audit, I, I think that, you know, if, if we look at the last few weeks, it shows that we're in a, in a correction mode now, that we've had two years of kind of, two years of sketchy book, book, bookkeeping. And now we're at a point, now we're, we're correcting things. And what I would like to do is, I would like to, before we go ahead and order an, an operational audit, is to let our comptroller do what she does best, which is basically keeping close tabs on our finances. I, I do not think it would be of any value at this point. We do, we have a high rating in Moody's. We are, we are rated at an A credit rating. In this last issue, there was, there were numbers that were, were asked for, they were asked for by me, they were asked for by you. We were, we were able to make an informed decision tonight, and I, I kind of think that, you know, especially in the light of, of having to pay so much for legal fees, I, I really think that adding another audit on top of the one that we have to have, which is the, the audit that we should have, an operational audit might seem excessive and might cost a lot of money for the city, that really it doesn't, I, I don't think it will, a lot of money for the city, that really, it doesn't, I don't think it will, will benefit the, the, the city, or the taxpayer, for that matter. And, you know, I, I like to consider us, as a council, a, a financial review board. I mean, Counsel Rosika is on top of, you know, he, he can really look at the numbers. I'm more of the kind of broad scope vision, you know, I'm interested in admission statement. I don't, I don't like to, you know, I think that we have a nice balance on this council to, to really set the tone, to move the city forward. I think our differences, the diversity on this council is a good thing, but I don't think we need to add more cooks into the kitchen, more, you know, I, I think that, that, let's just see, Counselor McCormick and I just joined you. Let's just see how, how we do this budget cycle. Let's just see where we are in, you know, eight months. Then, you know, if, if things are not working, I think we can recommend, I mean, I think we can, can really consider some of these. But I, I really think that, you know, give, give the new, the new, the new staff a chance, give the new counselors a chance. You know, I think we can serve as, you know, all of us could serve as an asset, and, but I, I really think that relinquishing our own authority does not bode well for us as a city. And I think that the stronger we appear to the public, to creditors, to, to, to potential businesses, the stronger we are at, at attracting the very things that we, that we want in this community. So obviously, the requests are, are valid requests. I also, but I also want to say that our, what we have here already is, is working. I can see it working. It worked tonight. It can work again, and, you know, and I think that this, this, this exchange is, is healthy, and I hope that, you know, we, we will not need an operational budget at any point in the future. And, you know, you know, as far as like a financial plan, when I think of a financial plan, I think of like a retirement plan. You know, Auburn, I don't want Auburn to retire. I don't want Auburn to, you know, it's not like, what I look at Auburn is Auburn is an, is an ongoing, we're always going to be bonding for our infrastructure. That's part of what a, what a city does. So it's not like we're saving for some nest egg. What we're doing is, we are a city, we're, we're using, we're, we're, we're basically going through what all councils do, and that's make decisions that keep the city running as smoothly and as efficiently as possible.
Counsel Rosika?
To use the term best practices, best practices recommends an operational audit of any business every three years. We had our Audit Committee, who is made up of, of leaders in this community, financial leaders, who use best practices. This was one of the recommendations to use, what I'm going to call this best practice. If we want to be a best-practice city, we better start using best practices. I, I believe, just from what we've seen here in the last few weeks transpire with, with the water fund balance, is, is, to me, is a very strong indicator of, yeah, maybe it's a good idea that we have an operational audit. I think it's very important. It, it puts the stake in the ground with a benchmark, that you know where you're at. Right now, I, to tell you the truth, I don't think our comptroller would have enough time to do a complete audit by herself. I, I, it would just take away from her normal duties. This is needed to be done, like I say, as a best practice, every three years. We're actually kind of getting there where we're overdue, and to me, it makes perfect sense. I think it's very important that we, we commit to doing one. It certainly, it never hurts to have another set of eyes. Another set of eyes means more transparency. The more eyes you add, the more transparent the process becomes. So to me, an operational audit is not only critical and key, but it's an absolute necessity.
Anyone else?
Just on other business?
Please. This is other business.
Oh, what? First, Mr. Aikman was in this afternoon, or this evening, about a little while ago. Was it this afternoon? I just wanted to be sure, or I know Mr. Selby's probably written it down, but, and I know that Mike Talbot and Public Works do work side by side with him, but I do support his idea about the NICEG. If we could get in better connection with them and what they do with trees. I don't know how to go about it.
Coordination, some kind of-
Yes, because, well-
Relationship.
We tried before when they annihilated all the trees, and what Mr. Aikman just brought up about the wasted time where they pruned or beheaded all our trees, and they could have been really, they're bad trees. He is a valuable resource in our community, and I know that we do, I don't want to say take advantage, but really, we do. And he's got such a wealth of knowledge, and I, I hope we can work with him and somehow connect with the NICEG. I just wanted to support his comments. The other thing I wanted to point out is, and I'm not sure if everybody got their email or opened it or whatever, this week, we got a council briefing paper from Christina Selvick, and it was upcoming, it's Communication of Upcoming Capital Projects and Bonding for 2014-15. It's kind of, I'd say, it's a summary of the previous reports and presentations that she's given us on what were, what projects are coming up, and how the staff has planned for them to be funded. And this is something that was voted on last year, and it's been in, it's kind of a rolling plan that gets amended as things move on, and it's well thought out, well planned. Everything's been balanced out here, and, and I know a lot of work has gone into it. It addresses the things the city needs, even though we want to say people are moving out and everything. Nobody's going to move in if we don't have roads and bridges and parks, and this is what that addresses. These are the plans the city has to keep things moving, to keep the, the city staff vehicles on the road, to keep our roads improved. These are things they plan ahead for. They don't just come up. Someone mentioned, I think Counselor Camardo, which is a great idea to lobby our state representatives for funding. I know Owosco just was successful, the watershed was, to get some funding to-
I was going to address that, but go ahead.
Well, that's because of lobbying. But I wanted to, Mr. Selby, you, I think it was you that mentioned how much total funds that Christina Selvick has, over the years, discovered, she's, she's obtained for us. Is that true? Did you have that number, like?
The last two years, about 7.3 million, and since she started the city in 2008, I think it's 24, 25 million.
So it's like almost $35 million that she has identified and successfully obtained for the city, which is amazing. It's, it's this, that's money that has put together so many of the things that we have. So I know Christina's got her finger on the pulse of funding sources. She's helped, when I was city clerk, she helped a lot with the grant applications, and I just wanted to recognize that, that we're not saying you're not looking for funding. It's, it's been looked for, and it, it's hard to get, as we know. The SAFER grant is still pending. That was it, I think, that. And I just wanted to clarify something. I know Counselor Cuddy said sketchy. He meant sketchy financing.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, no, no. Like, you know-
He didn't mean sketchy. I know what you meant.
A drawing.
Hit and miss.
Not a fine drawing, but a-
Yes, I know what you meant. Sketchy, sketchy.
No, I'm not, I'm not implying any-
I know that. I want, for you, for the, yes. Sketchy's not a good-
Artist.
That was your art talking. That was a sketch in an artistic way, not in a financial way. I'm, I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll wrap it up then. As Counselor McCormick made mention, I was invited to a press conference this afternoon in Owosco Town Hall. Senator Seward and Senator Finch were able to bring back $200,000 through the state budget for work at the Dutch Hollow Inlet?
Yeah.
Inlet? So Soil and Water District will be using that to better, better improve the banks, whatever else they do. What surprised me, found out today, that Dutch Hollow Inlet brings in 20% of the inflow into the lake. The only other thing, and only other inflow that's larger is at the inlet, in the south end, south end of the lake. So $200,000, you said, Counsel, we, we need to hit our representatives, as Christina's doing, but $200,000 is going to go a long way to improving the quality of our, of our drinking water, which serves 44,000 people. Counselor?
Are we still on your other business?
Sure are.
Okay. Well, I'd like to, to bring up something that's been pretty much brought up to a higher level this week. We have a columnist in the paper who said that he had two sources giving him information from executive sessions. I had several people, many that I didn't even know, no judges' names, who we were considering, asking me who that, who that I thought it would be, and I didn't answer any of these questions. We have a problem with the executive session material, and I don't know, it's, to me, that's an ethical violation. I don't know if this is where, should be brought up for, for the Ethics Board to, to begin an investigation, but somehow, these leaks have got to stop. Because the next thing you're going to know, contract negotiations are going to come out. If, if these leaks do not stop, there is no reason why executive material should be shared with the public. And I think, to tell you the truth, I'd like to see some type of level investigation.
Do you believe everything you read in the paper?
When people come up and tell me that they know names, they list names, that should have, where, that I don't know where they got them from, and that were talked about behind those doors, what else can I assume?
I don't know.
Anything else? Counselor, I would, I would suggest, and I don't disagree with you, to turn this over to the Ethics Board.
Agreed.
So whatever, I, I don't know what the mechanism is, but I would, I would support that. And I don't, I don't believe it needs anything from counsel. I think that would be Mr. Rossi to handle through the Ethics Board, so.
Someone would have to make a formal written complaint and a request. And I might caution that we can discuss it with the Ethics Board, but they don't have the power to subpoena people and put them under oath, but they can look into it as much as they possibly can.
Well, if there was a, if there was a problem with this, how would you handle it, John?
It's a good question. I mean, you know, how do you prove who said what?
Right, right.
Because we've all heard things after certain meetings.
People who were in the room. And I've, I've been confronted myself-
Mm-hmm, so have I.
On many occasions, on things that may have occurred, and obviously, somebody's breaching their, their code, that, that what is an executive session should remain there. They can look at it, sure, but I would really prompt that we just do it, somebody, want to write a letter and say, please?
Counselor?
I think all of us, at one point or another, have, at the, during the time I was city clerk, people assumed I was involved in an executive session, and would ask me things I didn't even know, because I wasn't there. But this seems to me, I mean, I've heard things myself, Counselor, that we've talked about in executive session, but I've never come before the public and accused my fellow counselors of breaching anything, based on very little information.
Very little information. You say very little information. That information is shared behind those closed doors, with a small audience. It gets out-
Don't lecture me about it. I understand.
Okay, so you've got a limited number of people with that knowledge, or should have, and somehow, it gets disseminated out into the public.
I know.
Now, I have at work, I have a clearance, and I have to work on it, keeping the clearance. I have to keep my mouth shut about everything.
So do we.
Obviously, somebody is not doing that.
Counsel, let's, let's wrap it up this evening.
Okay.
We had our best advice from our attorney as to what the next step, so. Anything else?
Time to go home.
I don't talk.
Good one, John.
Do we have a request for executive session?
I have.
I'm going to be the bad guy. Yeah. I'll make it short. It's a collective bargaining negotiation update.
Entertain a motion for executive session. Counselor Camardo, seconded by Counselor Cuddy.
Motion for executive session for collective bargaining discussion. Counselor McCormick?
Under accusation of breach? Aye.
Counselor Camardo?
Yes.
Counsel Cuddy?
Yes.
Counsel Rosika?
Yes.
All right, we'll be in recess for executive session.